Kind of looks like a jazz ensemble tonight where we're all. It's gonna be a nice neat road, you're all over the place, but as you know, we've got all kinds of elections coming up, so appreciate your patience. All right, I think it's close enough on the clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and then ask you to join me for the closing of the meetings.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Next is an extended agenda. The, uh, I don't know if you could see him, but I could see him. Regest that he addressed the board in one of his emails, so I'm gonna call the animal control report. Is there any other items on the extended agenda that anyone would like to call?
Do you know if there was any of those fire pumps? Do you feel they all should be built? Everybody feels that way, does he not?
We want fire pumps?
The three new ones I need to review whether or not I can go.
If anybody feels that we shouldn't build one of those, let me know by the way.
Okay. So I hear the mark to approve the extended agenda, what for the animal control report?
Go ahead.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rick, if you'd like to address the animal control report now.
Thank you. First, I'll give you this. This is the voicemail I've used for, originally it was 260 some dogs that were not licensed. By February 21st, I'll explain it shortly. Um, on Saturday, February 21st, I completed all first calls to unlicensed dog owners and prepared 22 warning letters to people that I could not contact by phone, either their phone was disconnected or it just wasn't provided. On Monday, February 23rd, Vicky Shaw sent an email to me, including all the supervisor , sort of stating she received several complaints that I misrepresented myself as the Wisconsin Animal Registration Compliance Department. I was not given an opportunity to address the issue before it was sent to the board, and each of you has received a copy of the script that I followed exactly when making the phone calls and leaving the messages. In no way did I misrepresent myself as anything other than the Animal Compliance Warden for Hudson Township. In the past year, a similar situation occurred that was unsubstantiated and untrue. Before checking the facts with me, Vicky Shaw sent an email to all members of the board without including me at that time. After review, it was decided by the board that all future complaints, all future complaints would be given to me directly for resolution, and this did not happen. These actions and behavior have made doing the job difficult and uncomfortable, and I'm asking the board to resolve the problem. Thank you.
Are we getting complaints in writing? Has anybody expressed that sentiment?
With any writing? No, just verbal?
I had a walk-in today.
And they feel that you're abusive when you call them? Yes, and they're being abusive right now? What you did tonight, Rick, I feel was abusive. Well, you came on very strong. This wasn't a nice, tender presentation.
You were there at the last meeting.
No, it was very, come to be strong.
Does there anyone here that... Wait, wait, wait. Hang on a second. It's hard enough doing this job when I've got people... I got a message tonight that they wanted to know why I sent them a letter because their dog they licensed last year, they renamed the dog. And on this year's license, that old name is still in the system. So I gotta call them back. It's, it's hard enough getting things straight on this side when you're talking to, you know, people that, two over 200-plus people.
Do you like, do you like...
My wife sat next to you the entire time that we did that.
Do you like your job?
I do.
Then you need to be more understanding than that 200-plus call, Rick. Sorry, you do.
Well, then, why don't you do me a favor and revise that and then let me know?
Okay, I will. And from now on, we'll take care of it that way.
So I guess, I guess I would request on all these complaints, that we get a name, an address, and a number so that we can resolve it.
Thank you.
Do we have them?
We did.
Okay.
I have a whole file folder full of them.
Well, can, I mean, that's what Rick's presentation was.
I wasn't aware of that either.
That's from last year. The three we had this year, Vicky took two phone calls, and I had a walk-in today.
So who, who were the three from this year?
Uh, Mr. Spreeman came in today, licensed his dog, and complained. And the two were the two phone calls that, that Vicky took for complaining about misrepresentation, and their dogs were dead.
And what was that? Their dogs were...
Dead.
Oh.
And, in a, just to let you know, my concern is we had a police officer that did this job before that did it the same as what you're doing at this way, Rick, and that wasn't acceptable either. And Phil Smith was very, very easygoing and, you know, apologetic and sorry to bother you. And, and as far as I'm concerned, that's the way it ought to be done, and the reason for that is, I'm sorry, getting my dog licensed isn't the most important thing in this world that I have to get done. And therefore, people don't necessarily look at it that way that it's that important.
Last year, I called five and six times till we got to the very end.
I know.
And I'm, I don't know what the plan is for this year. You guys are gonna have to let me know. After two, my thought was, let's send them a citation.
And I've said to my wife before I came over to the meeting tonight, I said, what, what has happened? That people can't, we gotta send out over 200, make over 200 calls from last year. That postcard we send doesn't, and it's because they just, licensing their dog isn't that important in their life, and I get that.
Then maybe we shouldn't...
And there are people that don't think they ought to license their dog.
Maybe we shouldn't go for 100% then.
And why are you even calling them? If they don't license their dog, and if their dog gets taken up, it's their problem.
The state says we're supposed to.
I guarantee you, the city of Hudson doesn't call, doesn't license their dog.
I don't think there's any other municipality that's...
No, I know, but it's tough for the people that actually take the time and do it, pay the money. I do, I pay for my licenses. I license two dogs.
I don't think Rick should have to waste his time calling people.
Maybe we should address that.
Cause then all they're doing is complaining, saying that he's being a jerk. So, you want a solution? We just stop making the phone calls.
I agree.
If you don't want to license your dog, don't. It's your deal with the state and the dog catcher in memory. You wanna not worry about your dog, license it. If you don't care about your dog, don't license it.
Maybe we should move forward with it that way.
So let's, let's put it on the agenda for next month.
Well, thank you very much, because that makes life a lot easier for me.
And I don't, and I also think as the chair, where it did go up the entire board, if, if people lodge in a complaint like that, I, I think it's just normal. We, we should know who they are, what they call, where they live, and what they said. I, I, I've fielded a bunch of complaints not related to dogs, and I feel the same way. If it's an anonymous complaint, I don't know who they are or what, what it is. If, if we're fielding those, let's get a name and a number.
Okay, thank you.
I have a name and a number for everybody. We did not take any, any anonymous dogs.
They have a name and a number.
Okay, let me ask...
Yeah, but that's, no, we're not gonna get into that in the middle of the board meeting. Let's, let's handle that offline.
Well, the email I sent out just said, please make sure that you're saying this is what it is and, you know, to try and keep it soft or whatever, you know, like Tim said. But, so I said exactly what it was.
Right. It did say, it did say several complaints, and it did say it specifically to this, so let's discuss that and put it on the agenda.
Can I ask something? How did you get those several complaints?
Move on.
We're gonna, we gotta move on, Rick. Any other, any other discussions on this? All right, we're gonna do more, sure, anything else? Committee reports, fire?
Our next meeting will be April 22nd at 8:30. Ken was able to go through the fire hall. He really enjoyed that, because he plays facilities for the city of River Falls. And, um, the offices will move into the new fire hall in mid-March and start working out of the new fire hall. They won't be moving into the facilities till probably mid-June, and the reason for that, they didn't want to pour the aprons in October, cause the, the construction firm wouldn't agree to guarantee the concrete if they didn't have 30 days of curing time before it froze, and as a consequence, they, they opted to leave the aprons until spring to pour it. That's why they made June. So, they will move in mid-June with the fire hall. The bell, it's above City Hall, was the original fire department bell, so it's gonna be moved from above City Hall to the fire hall, the new fire hall, because it was the original fire hall bell. So it's being moved, I would like, it's kinda neat. And then, the grand opening will be August 6th. I don't have a time yet on when on August 6th the open house that everybody will see. Pretty neat, it really is a nice fire hall. Everybody's gonna be very proud of it and get to see how nice it is. And just for everybody else off the record, all the other years that we've had agreements with the city, we've had to pay depreciation on that building for decades. We do not pay anything for this building. It's their building, and all we do is pay for the supplies and things that they use to maintain the building. There's no rent to this building or nothing to the other municipalities. They finally figured out that it's their building. At the end of 50 years, the old fire hall's their building. We don't have any portion of it. And Jeff Johnson used to complain about that all the time, and I just thought I would share that with everybody, that that's the way it went down, and they finally agreed to that, which is really nice. But that's it for my, on that.
I'll get a rebate?
No, we won't. Library? Anything new on libraries for us?
Uh, nothing, we just, we just, um, passed a couple new policies, and other than that, everything's fine right now.
Okay. Uh, the Wisconsin Town Association did not meet this month, so I have nothing to do there. Reported on our intergovernmental advisory committee last month, so that's, uh, that's it for the committee reports. Chairman report, I'm just gonna go through that very briefly, because we're gonna talk about roads later tonight. But, uh, we're heading into the spring, and there's a lot of road activities, so I'll just go through these as succinctly as I can. Uh, we had our pre-construction meeting over at the Baldwin Highway Department. Uh, that's for Daley and Kenny Road, all of the different XL Energy, and everyone else was there for utilities. All the right-of-way is acquired, and so far, it looks like we're in good shape. I left the roadway drawings with Vicky, so if anyone can't sleep some night and you wanna see road drawings, we have it on file. Uh, we met with the state, Wisconsin State People out of Eau Claire. Uh, we met with the town of St. Joe, the county, and the town of Hudson. The concern was, is that in 2021, the city is going to be reconstructing Highway 35, basically from the interstate all the way up into and through North Hudson. And the concern is, is that eventually, that bridge that goes across Lake Mattoodoo will be closed. Now, it might be only a week at the time, but it could be down to one lane. And the proposal that they have is, as that reconstruction goes, and it'll be from, basically curb to curb, is where, where will all of that traffic go? And the proposal is a...
No, no, it's doorway to doorway.
Yeah.
Front of the building to front of the building, sidewalks go too.
It's significant. So, so you just robbed my train of thought. You just robbed my train of thought. But, but the initial, the initial, uh, roadway plan is that you go up to the bridge, go over Highway 95, and come down. And the reality is, is that people are gonna find their own way where they're gonna find it. And the concern that St. Joe has and the town has is they're gonna probably find Trump Brook 90% of the time. So what are we gonna do with a rusted road that's accident-prone and people using it all times in the day and night? Uh, we, we expressed our concerns, uh, they, they listened to us. The county said, one thing we could do is, we could get solar speed limit signs that flash and, you know, slow down, this is your speed that's there all the time, they're about $2,500. Uh, just on the cursory part of it, we discussed, maybe St. Joe would buy one, maybe we'd buy one, at least we'd bracket both ends of Trump Brook Road. Uh, we asked if the county handed you that they could rent. Uh, so far, they don't, but they just put a new one up out here by Burkhardt, I have not seen it yet.
Can I, can I have asked, show hands. If you've come in from the east side of Burkhardt, has anybody seen that sign at the top of the hill when you come in? There's a speed limit sign with a flashing, and if you're doing over 35, it's red. If you're doing under 35, it's just yellow. Have you seen it?
When did it go up?
I saw it today.
Just went up.
Just went up, like a legal...
Honest, I was surprised that, and the sheriff was sitting in the church parking lot. And I, and I, so their answer to the problem was, will it slow traffic down? And the answer is no, I don't believe it will.
So, so...
It's just close to Trump Brook.
So, so it's an issue. It's gonna be an issue for ambulances and, uh, and everyone else. You wanna try and get ahead of it, but it's, it's gonna keep, keep coming up again. Carmichael Road, UU, just to the briefest of terms, there's potholes there with the spring coming up. We've done some additional research as to who owns all the corners. And if you boil it all down, if you're Carmichael and County Road, UU, when you go to the west, which is called Vine Street, that's the city. When you go to the north, to the government center, that's the city. You go east, that's the county. And you go south from that, basically now they're called, where's that? That's the town. So we're gonna be doing some additional, just patching, not any reconstruction on that. We're gonna talk in detail about road plans later tonight. Uh, road restrictions are going on Thursday, March 5th. Uh, so tell your instruction people, get out there soon or, or wait. Sweeping, they get to ask us every year about sweeping. Uh, some communities wanna do it to what I call room truck standards. Uh, the town does not have access to a room truck. We can't sweep it and pick up the sand. All we can do is sweep it, and it goes into the right-of-way, which is, most people think is their line. But we are, in the past, I've done some research on that, in the past, we've done about 40 hours worth of sweeping, primarily on intersections and cul-de-sacs that are really needed. So we're gonna be looking at that and seeing if there's new things to add. Uh, spraying, patching, chip sealing reconstruction, we're gonna talk about later tonight. I'm also gonna do my comment on my, um, chairman's comments. Uh, there's a brand-new, um, committee. We love committees, but it's a joint EMS committee. We met, uh, within the last week or so. We toured the new facility, it's directly south of Hudson Hospital. It's, uh, sleeping quarters, a lake kitchenette, and a base for three, three ambulances. So Lake, Lakeview did a great presentation as to, uh, runtimes, a lot of which we've seen presented here. Uh, but it is now the city of Hudson, North Hudson, and the towns of Hudson, Warren, and a little bit on the north part of Troy. So they have their, they have their hands full when the, when the sirens go off. So I'm gonna keep it very short with that and, um, move to public comment. If you speak on public comment, cause there's a couple tonight, I don't want it any longer than three minutes, and we're not allowed to respond. So those are the rules for that. Yes, sir?
Uh, my name is Sam Christic, and I live in 677 O'Neill Road.
Could you speak a bit a little bit, please?
Sam Christic, and I, 677 O'Neill Road. And I got some confusing information, you know, so I'd like clarification. I'd like to split my lot. And I found out that, uh, because I'm on the east side of O'Neill Road, I can't do this, you know, it's only my lot, and one nor to me, that's, uh, there are two, more than two acres, you know, I have three and a half acres there. There are three lots that are buildable, actually they have the home zone. They are, little, little more than an acre, acre and a half, some. So, this, this was, uh, like I said, it's, uh, very confusing to me. It was 20 years ago plus, when, uh, they were developing Middletown Heights, they brought it down to one acre. It was my impression that extra territorial zones, one acre. And like I said, I'm excluded from that. And my daughter here, she wants to build one of those. I'm willing to take a piece of land, you know, acre, acre and a quarter for her to put the, put a house there.
Yeah, I'd like to build my home on the, the land I grew up on, to also be able to take care of my father and my mother as they grow older as well. And we're being told unless you have at least two acres to split, which we have a little over three, that you're not allowed to. But 10 feet west, it's, it's an acre. So we're actually on O'Neill Road.
I think we should put it on the agenda. Yeah, I think we should.
And, and...
Just, just, just to help you, we're, just so you know, we're not being unfriendly. We're not, we're not allowed to respond. We, we, we have another meeting this month because of the elections, it's, it's March 31st. I think you should come on the agenda. Come and talk to us informally.
Okay.
And then we can help look at the maps and help show you where the, where the one-acre lots are and the extra territorial, and if, if there's a mistake or misunderstanding, that, that's the way to, to...
No, that's fine, I just want the clarification, you know? I'm, I'm not here to create the enemies or...
No, 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 and we're here to help.
Yeah.
This is our clerk, Vicky Shaw, so asked to be on the March 31st agenda.
No, it's already on.
Oh, it's already on?
Well, you just said, just put it on.
Oh, you didn't... That's too many.
And I think that, I mean, I also called, um, Brian, right? And he put us on the March 16th planning, um, the commissioning meeting, but I don't know if we should still be going to that or...
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Then we'll be there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Just trying to invite everybody real quick. The Jacobs main house, kids wanna build in this corner, we're gonna put in a 66-foot easement, and Jerry will have it, that without the easement on it, the foundation wouldn't work today. 66-foot easement, the both I'd like to share. Jerry's gonna stay here, the kids are gonna build their homes here.
Is one of those already written in there?
Pardon?
What road is it?
This is County Road 8. This is existing. Just put it, put it easement. County Road 8, corner.
Two, two driveways on this 66-foot easement, that's all it is.
Okay. So...
It's a couple miles south of it.
Oh, okay. It's, it's right, it's right here, Dan.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
So it'll just be a shared driveway. I'll take it, and then you're gonna call me when you're ready, right? To Amanda, you'll have to, and then you can get it to me by Monday, but you have to get it to Amanda, so make sure you call her to Brian's office and then just talk to her. Get the final map. Chris is here for the G S J's, and I think we can do that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Thank you. All right, anyone else wants to speak? Public comment? Yes?
We called, uh, dispatch after that deer kill on, on the 5th. I think it'd been dead there about four or five days, and on the 23rd, it hadn't been picked up yet. About the 25th, it got picked up, but dispatch called again. But in that time, it doesn't seem that township's being served at that length of time.
Which deer was that one?
That was, uh, on Bear Drive.
Oh, yeah, they're both gone. Even the ones down by Sally and Bill, pieces is gone.
But they laid there for...
Yes, they did.
25 days, that's a long time. Summertime.
And I see they marked one out on 12.
Yeah, I saw that one.
That one's gone. There's another one in the ditch that isn't marked, so I thought about calling the dispatcher about that, but, okay. But I agree with you. We're just gonna have to keep pushing the dispatcher to get them to do it.
Like you said, especially when warm weather comes.
It won't be fun.
No, that won't work. Who else wants to speak on public comment?
Now, should there be stop signs out here on, on 12 with the kids in the summertime playing and picnics and stuff at the end of the driveways here?
Right here?
Yes.
I'm gonna respond on the public comment real quick, not responding to that. We had, we had that whole safety meeting that we hosted here, and, and the state has given a grant to the county to do additional safety improvements from, from basically from Norlake all the way to New Richmond. But until the warrants are there for traffic signals, we can't get any traffic stop signs. But they will be doing, um, striping and rumble strips and pilets. That's over a half a million dollar.
Just to let you know, when stop signs on the parking lot aren't enforceable.
Oh, we don't, okay.
You know, just so you know, no matter what private parking lot that is, they are not enforceable.
You're gonna tell me market that stop sign, it's not enforceable?
It's not enforceable, just so you know. Even though they're there, they're not enforceable, just so you know.
Stop.
All right, we wanna take as much time as we can, I wanna be responsive, so, Mary, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, uh, I spoke to town board, uh, a little while back, and, uh, Tim, it seemed like pretty easy to get on the agenda, so I'm appealing to the town board. Uh, the county of Monroe just passed the Second Amendment Sanctuary County by 16 to 1, but what's even more impressive is that at that county meeting, there were over 400 people that attended that meeting. Um, now, I can't think of a time that 400 people would attend our county board meeting, so it's quite a showing. And I, I, I think an opportunity for the town to make a stand, um, and to, to get, you know, the town people involved in this government is to, um, put on the agenda an opportunity for you to discuss the Second Amendment Sanctuary Town, and hopefully that'll help us move on to the county. Uh, as you know, the county election's coming up, and I think this board's, uh, pretty solid, and we think that it's, uh, it's an opportunity. One of the things that was stated at the Monroe County discussion with a vote of 16 to 1 was that this is just the beginning of what's happening in the state. And so, I'd like to see you jump on board early and see how many people you can get to fill this room.
Who are you talking about? Why don't you put it on the agenda? I need more information, though.
We need the information, just to get it on the agenda, then.
Cause I don't know what I'd be voting on.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just gonna, gonna say this on the public comment. The...
I'm just saying, we're gonna talk under public comment.
Well, because if we, if we put it on, then we have, we have a packed room.
Why don't we have an information meeting first or something?
Yeah, there you go.
So who wants, where, where would we have an informational meeting at?
Here, it would have to be here.
Information, sir.
After the elections. I'm not tearing it down, so the election is at 12, so...
I mean, there's, here, here's the thing, there's, there's 1,260 towns, there's 72 counties in the state. If you follow what, what the unit of government that they're going through, they're going at the county level, not all the way down to the town level. So, yes, we could, we could do that, but in terms of impacting and having citizens and everything else, I believe it's, I believe it should be at the county level, that's the unit of government, if you call Minnesota.
I'm not getting them to fight. That's the problem. Don't ever put that on the agenda.
Oh, can we discuss it on the March 31st to talk about, uh, an informational...
Setting an informational meeting.
We're not supposed to take, we're not, we're not supposed to take action on...
Set a date for an informational meeting?
Yes.
That's all we're gonna do?
That's all we're gonna do.
So set date for informational meeting.
All right. Our meeting's half done, we haven't gotten any agenda items. Any other public comment today? Okay, thank you. All right, next we have Urchins LLC primary plat for summer prairie first edition.
I've already wired my mouth.
You revised it since you brought me the ones?
Yeah. Um, well, we got coming to jump 13, so we revised one.
So you can roll those where they're...
Well, it's, the only thing that changed was this one.
Well, it's still, I don't want...
Here, here.
You guys all have, you guys all had this, throw that, that small version was already wrong, and then I gave you other ones tonight that are wrong, so we don't want them either, because it gets...
So the only question I have is what we changed?
What, what we changed was, uh, 31 and 32. Uh, because of slope, they're gonna get the slope. Because of slope, they couldn't get the slope.
Oh, about six percent slope?
Yeah, so they, we slid a driveway down and we had to do a joint driveway here.
Oh, okay.
And so we did a little pan.
That's all you did?
Yeah, there. And then we did a joint driveway up there. Yeah, we screwed, uh, we did this panel here, do a joint driveway, we can do slots, can we? Engineering wise, can we get the slope down? And then we did a joint driveway over here.
Where do you want to start on this?
So, cause I'm not ready to make any more.
That's right, period tonight. The reason for that is-
You guys should all have this in front of you, that came from Sarah late this afternoon.
Yes.
That's what I'm gonna ask, so, so what we, what we just got on our desk tonight is a letter from Sarah.
Did you get it too? She-
On the concept?
Yes.
And then you've, and then you've, and then you've got Jeff Durkey's letter.
Yes, and we-
And we start by this guy.
Yeah, so that's where we took, we took care of Jeff Durkey, we picked him up and-
Okay, so where would we like, where would we like to start? Do you wanna stay on Durkey till we move to the next one?
Well, I'm-
He already picked Jeff Durkey's.
Yeah, so we, we took care of Jeff and AC will have a couple things on there, pensionary kind of, they need to upgrade or whatever.
Somebody's gotta bring that to speed, I haven't read all of Sarah.
Well, none of us have, we're planning on our best.
Yeah, just got to set them.
Well, comprehensive plan.
Or thirty or something like that.
At a minimum, building plots for lot eighteen, twenty-nine, and thirty should be completed at the time of road construction.
Yes, we said, I'm seeing the probably on these.
The western property boundary of lot four and CSM level, we've reduced from four point six four acres to two point five eight acres. Does this adjustment comply with the town lot calculations? Number two, no.
So-
Because lot four has to stay in the CSM.
So can I adjust that now, or do you wanna work with the whole?
No, that's, that's cool, that's-
Go one by one.
That's, okay, so, so first off, we adjusted the property line along the, uh, the east line and the, and the south line here, given a strip of land.
Because of the fence.
Yes, given a strip of land, so that'll be needed to, to Charles Garvey. And so then we adjusted, uh, lots to take care of that. And so with that, we had to adjust some property lines here, and adjust the property. So with the two and a half acre average, um-
But you can't do that. And the reason for it is, what you did is you took this four acre lot out and reduced these back to two acres, and you can't leave a minor with two acre lots with less than the two and a half acre average.
So, like, so the whole subdivision is gonna be two and a half acre average. You know, the whole plot is right up to two and a half acre average, two point five two.
Okay, but you can't put that lot in there.
But this is separate, right, to CSM? You can't, you can't combine it with the subdivision because of completely separate CSM.
I get what you're saying, but you can't do that.
So because-
Cause now you left this short.
Yes, but if you look at the whole thing, if you go with this combined, where the first-
Put it in there, but you already sold two lots.
So, yeah, so I mean, so if I need to fix it, I need to add these two lots back into the subdivision?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
Okay, as long as you can do that, that'll work.
So there's gonna be two of these lots added into the subdivision?
All of them, all of them, CSM.
Like, you didn't do that, you sold?
All four of the minors have to come back in.
Right, get that, so I'm just-
So all three of them added back into, back into the preliminary plat. They're already in the calculations for the two and a half acre average.
Oh, are they?
Yes, yeah, we, yeah, so yes, because we-
I got what you did, it's why you did it, you picked up a lot, I figured that out right away.
Well, we were gonna do that, but then, so Brian, when I submitted the planning, he goes, he goes, you don't have two and a half acre average, I said, but I have two and a half acre average through this first edition here. And he goes, no, it needs to be per, only, so then I'm, well, then I need to add this.
Uh, Tammy's only concern with this was, when you move that lot line, does that create an issue with that holding line, with this lot?
No, I mean, this was already designed that way.
Okay, so it's okay. And you're, so this creates enough building area there?
Yes.
Just, just lot forty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we looked at all the CDs and everything.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So you're gonna bring the minor back into the major?
So-
Yes.
How does that happen? In this, in the county?
Well, because he has to do all these lot line adjustments and all that, it would be the perfect-
So it's gonna have to come back anyways, the whole thing's gotta come back.
So we either need to move the four lot CSM into the plat or remove the calculations from the plat.
Move the four lot, he's, that's what you're gonna do, right?
But what, what I've already discussed, you can do that even if the lots have been sold?
Yeah, I mean, just-
That was my question.
His name will just be on the plat, right? His name will just be on the plat for those three lots. And this is by- So, and, and those three lots are excluded, so I wasn't trying to skirt by any of them.
And I was like, can someone clarify for me, please? Cause I've been trying to ask this question over and over again. How can we do that when two lots have been sold? I just wanna understand that.
Let owner be, is willing to put these plato's right back in the subdivision. I mean, they're not changing, he's gonna own them, and he'll just, his name will be on the subdivision, on that first edition.
Okay.
And I don't care how that happens, but it, cause that's outside of what we need. But we need a major that doesn't get messed up with that, might as well. So really-
I mean, I had all the calculations here, that, I was hoping that everybody would be able to follow that back. So everybody understood that.
Well, when I read the planning commission meetings, they talked about fifty-one lots, and I'm going, no, there's forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
There's actually forty-five.
Yeah.
You look at Sarah's letter, so that's why everybody's confused, and that's why I was confused, and it was like-
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, we got the CSM part figured out at this point. Okay, Smurf Court is a thousand twelve feet.
Needs to be a thousand.
So, yeah, this didn't, this road was adjusted, so at one time I met that it was shorter than that, but we, we ended up pushing this road through the land to the west because it made more sense with the grading plan.
Well, can you pull the color set back twelve feet?
No, if you need to pull it back twelve feet, I guess we'll pull it back twelve feet, yes.
So since we're talking about, can I ask why you named the roads what you did?
Um, I did not name the roads. Mr. South, did he name them after his grandchildren's, or his nicknames of his grandchildren?
Yeah.
Not except-
He might not be happy because, I don't know if that's gonna fly.
Okay, so, well-
Because Smurf Court, I don't think that's gonna fly.
Well, an E-Dog is not an acceptable-
E-Dog, and Mojo Trail.
And what is this, what is this? No, nobody knows how to pronounce this. Elevy, E-lo-
E-lody.
E-lody? Yeah, no, see that?
Does no one know if I'll be able to sell a house on Smurf Court?
No.
But I can, but I can, monkey, my car.
So, well-
I'll send you over to Benny Circle.
Yeah. Perfect. There's, it says here, the county has an issue too. Road name review is underway. Because they're not digging, so you might wanna-
Those were not likely.
I know, but-
E-lo. E-lo.
Benny Circle, Benny Circle will make it. I don't know if Mojo is gonna make it. E-lody or El, whatever, I don't know what it is. That one I don't know is gonna make it through. E-Dog, not gonna make it through, and Smurf is probably not gonna make it through. So he needs to come up with a couple new names.
Maybe he can use their actual names.
So we have a new minutes as to which ones are not gonna make it?
All of them.
Well, Ollie and Magoo are already-
I'm actually okay with them, you.
And Benny Circle is fine. Well, I shouldn't say that, cause there's our, in case there's already a Be-
Becky?
No, I know, but I'm just saying, for our purposes, Benny works right now. The county will have to decide if there's a-
Benjamin Lane.
There's Benjamin Lane, but we'll have to see if there's another Benny somewhere else in the county or something.
Yeah.
But-
So he just has to review them all with the county?
Yes, okay. We know Ollie and Magoo work, because it's already, that was part of the-
Minor.
Minor, so they already signed up on those. So road names need to be reviewed. And we don't need to know them right now anyway, so that's, um-
The four is-
You do realize this has to go to City Hudson for extraterritorial review? It seems like it's way out, but it's-
But it's four, it's within my life.
It, it's about this much. So, um, we already, you already fixed Jeff Durkey's, and he's gonna look at it again when it's done.
Okay.
Driveway separation, lots with double front, road run-ins does the driveway separation from the intersection, so-
So what you did there?
That's-
Yes, that's, that was the whole lot thirty-two thing, so, right?
Yes, so that's-
So that's why that got, right. Private subjects, we don't deal with the subjects, you gotta get that approved from the county.
Mm, yeah, so that's, that's just a comment that I'm making.
Site visit, obviously. Um, Patrol's lot twenty-seven has an existing builder site, so that's Bob's house, right?
Yes. And then-
No action on that, cause they, I guess he just updated it. Um, DOT says fine. Wetland delineation, so you have it mapped?
Yeah, that was done, completed, that's on the map.
Continuous building area shall be shaded differently. So on your other map, you'll have to-
Yeah, she wants a separate map there.
I think we have all of Jeff's notes, that was from a long time ago, when he, this is when he first came in and I had him sign all that. Is there any other things? Those are what I know from just this afternoon.
So this is all okay? Or views are due?
For what?
This second page is all okay or being reviewed?
Well, being reviewed, and, I mean, Bob's, it says no action is necessary, DOT no action. Wetland delineation, a fifty-foot structure setback was mapped.
Yes.
Right, so. Uh, DNR permit, um-
So I see, I see Tammy Traxler's copied on this. Did, did she do the wetland review of this then, or who's reviewing that?
I'm assuming she did, though that's been in for quite a while, so I'm gonna get that for quite a while, so.
I mean, is there some letter floating around from Tammy, like?
No, this is all-
It's all, no, that's, that's all.
Okay, uh, did you start stormwater maintenance agreement with Tammy on this yet?
Uh, um-
No.
AC might have started, but, I mean, they had one started from the CSM, so I'm assuming it's just a-
Right, and as she said when you were in, the stormwater, yes, because we had part of it for here, and so all this is gonna end up being included. So we need the stormwater maintenance agreement. So I'm sure once they get the preliminary, well, cause they just renewed it as concept, now they'll turn around and do it as preliminary, because of, um, any other? Oh! Gang.
Oh, yeah, gang mailboxes on all cul-de-sacs. Developer will install them. We will put that into motion.
Okay.
Just so you know, we're gonna start doing that on a regular basis.
It was just startling your face.
No, because we, we, we had a request from the county that all the cul-de-sacs have their mailboxes moved out into the straightaways. And what we decided was, any future majors, the developer needs to put those gang mailboxes out on a straightaway on cul-de-sacs so that they're not, cause what happens is it gets to be a plow machine in the winter time. Cause all the mailboxes get plowed in.
Yeah.
And they don't do, they plow one strip through a cul-de-sac, and then they will come back for two, three days. So people have been complaining about it constantly.
Pam, Benny Circle, where are the mailboxes gonna be? On Magoo Road, down on the corner, or are they gonna be?
Where?
Are they gonna go right inside once they turn? See, that's, cause that's short.
They're written, they're written, it's written.
That's what I'm thinking.
Probably. And the post office said, the only thing they were concerned about is when you put them in, if you put it on the right side of Benny Circle, then they have to be in the numbers who went around the cul-de-sac for the mailman. First one being the first one on the right, second, third. If you put it on the other side, you have to put them in reverse order. You know what I mean? So that, so the mailman knows which ones, you know what I mean? Now, cause we, we, I thought I'd go to the post office and find out what they wanna do. We decided it wasn't worth our time and effort to mail it out there, because nobody's gonna wanna move their mailboxes and pay for them.
Right.
You're on my cheat sheet. What else about cheat? Yeah, gang mailboxes are, assuming it was the keys, correct?
No, necessarily, you just have to put them in a row.
Oh, you have to put them in a row, yeah, I was about to just speak up.
Forty-eight lots is gonna change to fifty-one.
What, what?
Forty-eight, so we should just move it. So we're gonna prove this tonight?
Well, I don't think we can, but I think there's other stuff on here. I think it's gonna-
So it's gotta come back, I, can I get that kind of agenda then for?
March, Thursday first.
And I'll have this.
Yes.
I would rather have it come back. I would.
Yeah, I would, too.
And they reserves all about fence issues with you?
Yes, I was very pleased that, uh, the fence line will be the property line as you said.
Okay.
And the other issue was the, uh, my pasture borders, this and the fences in horrendous condition in some parts. And to make it simple, I said I'd be responsible for the fencing, which I'll get done before there's an urban neighbor and-
Good, thank you. That's nice of you.
Yeah.
How are you gonna put your fence post for fence law? Once you do it, are you gonna put the T toward your property?
It is not because-
I know, because you're doing it, but-
Oh.
Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm thinking of the future when they're trying to decide who's responsible for that fence in the future. I'm going on long enough, there probably won't be cattle there on that. That's probably true, exactly true, okay.
All right, so is that fine then?
Very advanced, anybody comments for pitch what's there?
Uh, just before they start designing mailboxes and stuff, and I think there's many pretty stuff to have on the line discussing, but since it's not came up, please, no key mailboxes. They just keep them grouped, because-
Sure, it'll just be their whole?
Yes.
Yes, the only idea again, shorten Smurf Court by twelve feet, the road is not to be over a thousand feet, is all I want to say.
What?
Shorten it by twelve feet, just so it's not over a thousand feet.
Shorten, shorten it, so road is not-
I don't care how you accomplish it.
It's not over a thousand.
We were talking about that, usually it's the-
I know, but I have, here's the, I'm just making sure-
What she wants may have done by the thirty-third. And I don't care if, cause it was a thousand feet until you moved the grading point.
Well, it was less, cause this one came up.
Yeah, right.
So it wasn't-
I don't care how you accomplish that, just make sure it isn't over a thousand.
You don't have to go back to plan permission for this, because it's not, well, does he, because of the CSM going in there now?
Yes, I would, I'd still say you should go back. Yeah.
I was just gonna say yes, just. Why didn't you go back? Why sent it on another meeting when I was just gonna-
They already approved it.
Yeah.
They approved it as fifty-one.
They approved fifty-one lots.
That's what some states do.
So they're good, they already did.
They already, yes, we said, who cares?
He's not drinking it, it's actually gonna be fifty-one.
I know, but the point is, it doesn't matter, like, we're gonna send them to meetings, they're gonna say yes.
So he doesn't have to go back. They did approve a fifty-one lots.
They did, that's what confused me when I looked at it.
Okay, so-
Thanks, Brian, and if you want, you can come back.
Double check it.
I have to, I know, so.
You don't have to, you have to double check it.
Yes.
Well, we're just asking you to double check it again.
No, I'm asking him to read it.
Oh, read it.
I move and deny the summer period first edition preliminary plat for the following conditions. Move the four lot CSM into the plat or?
No, I hate table and stuff.
Or move lot, just, you're just, I wanna say just move the four lot CSM into the plat.
Include it, include the CSM.
Include the four lot CSM.
Period, I wanna remove four lot.
Okay.
Two, shorten Smurf Court.
So road is-
So road is not over a thousand feet. I don't care how you accomplish that, just make sure. Road names to be reviewed. Four, stormwater maintenance agreement. And five, gang mailboxes must be installed by developer on all cul-de-sacs.
Put your second to that. Okay, second, for discussion, the deferred discussion night.
Well, my only question is, would road names be reviewed?
Probably.
We don't get those until final though.
Yeah, totally doesn't.
So we still can, okay, moving on now.
We'll come back.
Great. He'll have, because they're, the county doesn't like their road names either, so it's not gonna pass muster and...
What did I mean?
Okay, so you're not going to plan the commission, you're coming back to see us after the first...
You email me that?
We're the messenger now.
Yes, yes, tomorrow night.
Sure. Okay. 话语 discussion, what motion made for second, in all your favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. March thirty-first, remember, so put that under your calendar, because it's not the first Tuesday, because that's election day.
The Nixon's harvest time is late.
Hey, was he there yet?
Hello?
Hi, I forgot your name.
Dan Williamson.
Welcome back.
Yep, back again.
Looks like you're getting closer to, uh, getting your addition built.
Yes, we are.
I see the well builder out there.
We bet, we got the permission for the sanitary, man, the well builder, they're gonna work on that this week, and we've got the state approval on the drawings.
The, I don't have any problem with this guy, other than, at this point in time, can we ask you guys to do a stormwater maintenance agreement? On the stormwater land over here on the side that you did work on this winter?
I'm gonna tell you what, we'll, we'll do this separate and then we can talk about that next. Because I don't know what details are, although I've walked it once, but that's all I know. I know there's some water back in it.
That's part of the mission, then you can approve it.
Yeah, I don't know how this drawing and this project changes any of that, I don't understand.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, that's a great question, I just, they've been extremely cooperative, I just, I just don't know if we can condition that.
And I'm not asking for a condition.
I'll be more than glad, but I'll come back another time, we can talk about whatever it is.
Really, the stormwater maintenance agreement, just so that you knows what it is, is it just says every five years it's gotta be made to make sure that a sediment hasn't washed in.
Oh, sure.
And if you guys don't take care of what you did this time, you know, the town has the right to go in and do that, clean it up. You know what I mean, and build a church, is what it, what that mean, in whatever maintenance agreement within that, so like when we were talking with that previous development, that's what the stormwater maintenance agreement, just so it gives you a rough...
But the history has been, the churches were, you guys can hear of it, I'm sure they would continue, I don't agree with what it is.
That's all.
Because, because of the history, before the plat was approved, we did not retain maintenance agreements.
Oh, interesting.
And now we do, like, the first was, was ahead of you, so...
Okay.
So, I have a question on that. So, when was, back when it was reviewed, my understanding is there was a study done for it back there.
In the, in nineteen eighty-nine, Steve was in the next study?
Yes. And that, it was already determined that we should have stormwater maintenance agreement back there.
Wow.
So if there was already a study that was done, why wouldn't we just have them done, get it taken, I mean, this was back then, it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be handled back then. I'll work thirty years later.
Well, here's, here's a simple, here's a simple answer to that. Thirty, thirty years ago, the platform come in, they look at the stormwater management plan was approved. That's, Tammy did all that background, worked with us, I worked with church and the neighboring, neighbor, we split the cost. But there was never any maintenance agreement that was filed and recorded with the plat like we have here. It was just, where's the water gonna go? How does it get there? Where's the detention pond? That's how it all got silted in and built up and flooded in, in the harbor.
That's why you now have maintenance agreements, so we didn't do it.
Great, but don't we already have water issues back there?
Yes.
Okay.
But you don't have any way to do a maintenance, so you're, you're only getting part of the... But this discussion, I agree with, with him, you can't really tie it to maintenance.
I mean, we don't need to tie it onto this, but why can't we also agree to that? Why do we have to wait? Why wouldn't we get this all taken?
We need to have them come back and talk, because he doesn't know what to talk from, that's why. I get it, I do.
I mean, I've walked it, I don't, I, you know, I know it's complicated.
So when I went today and looked at it, I go back down in the landing circle and I agree with you, those trees need to come out. And I think there's probably in the future, there needs to be more ditch digging in this down here to make sure that we've got sufficient holding water in there.
All right, can we put it on the next agenda that we have a discussion on a stormwater maintenance agreement? With harvest time?
Yeah, I think we should do that if it happens, because spring that's your, now, now you're gonna go upstream.
Right. After the topography discussion that's been met there with the survey drawings and topography, because it's not gonna fix the...
No, you're, you just, and you aren't even at the end as I looked at, it goes across the street to St. Paul's and everything.
I have, I've seen what it has, and that's not gonna get solved here.
No, it isn't, no it isn't.
I agree with you, I'm just saying, we'll put it on the next agenda because we know there's flooding issues, so we keep kicking the can on the road of this thing and let's just fix it.
Okay, I, I just wanna respond, I just wanna respond to that real quick. I don't know if we're gonna fix it, we're gonna talk about having a maintenance agreement, which will allow us to come back in and do it if you guys don't. But, uh, I, I think, I think we fixed a lot out there, that's where we came out, had the bathrooms in.
I agree, looks good.
And what Tim said, I think those trees should come out.
I agree.
And, and you know, and the water that hits the trees, they're coming from further up the road.
Further up the road, so it went up the road.
So we, so if we're gonna do this, I'm just brought into discussion, we could have all the agreements we want with harvest time, and it's pouring water down from further upstream, we haven't, we haven't solved the harvest time before.
Great, you're welcome. My point is, let's get it started, it's like, we know where the problems are. You just said you guys went down there and cut, you've got too many trees to get rid of and stuff. That's just one lot, that's just one area, we have a lot more problems up there, but we still have to have it taken care of.
I, I don't, I don't agree with, I, I agree with you, I don't disagree with you, I agree with you. I just wanna narrow this discussion down to tonight, real quick. Harvest time's been there for a long time. It's my understanding you bought this building from the adjacent property.
Yep.
Right?
Yes, sir.
And you're asking, you're asking us to look at addition for bathrooms on that, certainly, tonight, which is why you're here, which is on the agenda.
Which is why I asked for it to go on the next agenda.
Good. Then I would ask that we broaden that, and we've also looked at all of the, for go further upstream, across Harborview and upstream. Because that's gonna be pouring water into this.
That's what it did last year.
And that gets, that gets the neighbors, that gets Dave Gorka, and all the people up there that are, that need to have the saving.
We got bigger issue, we're all rich.
Well, but I, we don't know who those all are, but we need Har, I mean, with harvest time, we just need them, we need to get in an agreement so we have access, that we need to sit, I don't have all the addresses or, I mean, we're gonna have to sit down and go through and figure out. So we're not gonna have that by March thirty-first and get everybody, so I mean, harvest time, I think we need to sit down with them, because really what we're asking for is that they allow us to get on the property to check it, to make sure that we can fix it.
But that's all I wanna get in the discussion, we're not, if they cooperate with us, we still have a problem.
Nine-five-two, two-nine-two, two-four-eight-seven, give me a call. Be more than glad to walk in.
Too fast for me.
Nine-five-two, two-nine-two, two-four-eight-seven.
Nine-five-two, two-nine-two.
Two-four-eight-seven. Be more than glad to walk in with your folks and start to look at my...
So let's, let's put out the agenda for discussion, let's put stormwater maintenance on for discussion.
Sure.
And this is something, I have a couple of questions for you. Last time you heard, we talked about, should we come back to this?
Yeah, that's what we should be.
Okay.
Sorry, that was my...
Last time we came in, we talked about paving, because it's commercial now, is it paved or are you going to pave it?
Right now it's gravel.
Yes, because it's wet.
Um, the gravel around the building is wooden solid, it's not wet at all.
The driveway didn't look wet today.
So it does need to be paved, so my question, is that part of your construction?
It wasn't going to be for this phase, but we have a little longer term plan to pave not only that parking lot, but the connection link over to the church.
Okay, so...
Timeline.
But it has to be.
Yeah, but it has to be paved, so I guess we...
It'll have to be paved by the end of summer then.
Yeah, that's probably when we would do it, I mean, I don't think we disagree with that.
Driveway, parking lot, paved, silent.
End of summer, August thirty-first.
Okay.
We'll plans close on November fifth.
Well, I know, but we, if it's not done, we need time, if you give them till November fifteenth and it's not done, then how are you gonna get it done?
August thirty-third is why I'm asking.
And if you need more than that, then you gotta come back.
We'll just talk to you guys, something's...
I don't even have any questions, I, I looked through all your plans.
I'm okay with everything.
I didn't see any fixed ranty concern, I'm glad you're expanding and doing it for the kids, so...
We're titled, little boys and girls wanting out in the woods to find potty, so...
So, so any other discussion, discussion amongst the board members, or questions you had for Dan? Do you want your motion to move it to the floor, either approve or deny it?
Right here.
Prove it. Okay, you need to make a motion to approve it?
With?
With driveway and parking lot paved by August thirty-first.
Yeah, driveway and parking.
Any, any other conditions on it? Okay, do you want to hear a second to that?
Second.
Second, for discussion, any, any other conditions or restrictions that we wanna have done or sealed?
Thanks, Pastor Mike.
Motion made, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you, folks.
Do you wanna press a copy?
These are nice.
I have a whole stack. I can take them if you want. Alright, keep the rest one, thank you, folks.
Continue. Alright, folks, uh, next we have Highway Club Business Condos Site Plan for seven twenty-six East Highway Club.
And again, you guys have stuff in front of you that came in at five o'clock tonight.
Okay, if a director, you can tell us who you are so we know.
Kip Johnson with ACA, traffic engineer.
Okay.
I'm Josh Collins, um, I'm a buyer of Brian Wood's property here.
Kip and Josh, who wants to give the presentation tonight, is that you, Kip, or?
No, I, I can, um, so we're, so basically this is one five acre parcel, um, right now, this is a, a unit, it can't be subdivided because of the, um, minimum lot size, um, but this is a unit right now, so we're proposing to buy this unit and subdivide it, it's, um, allowing the, and the, the association documents to develop this, so basically, there's a building here on half of the property and they're, you know, all along, Brian planned on doing it himself, but just kind of decided that he's not going to, so he's, we're looking at buying from him to basically do that, uh, do the same thing, so, um, we really don't really, we don't really wanna do anything too different than what Brian is doing frankly, we're looking at building like a, um, business condos. Um, two, two, um, two offices up front, warehouse in the back. Yeah, pretty straightforward, I think, as I said, it, as far as differing from what Brian's building is, um, it's gonna differ in look a little bit, but otherwise, um, that's really about it, um, I think, uh, maybe the main difference is, I think we, we wanna do a mezzanine above our, above the offices, but that's, that would be mainly for storage for the warehouse part, so...
So I had a couple of questions. We're in the board members as well, your, your LCE, your limited common elements, and you show it in the bat for each unit, is that, what is that? Are there gonna be garages back there or parking?
No, it's, yeah, it's outdoor parking, just like Brian's, um, building, basically, we wanted to give, um, each of the, the units somewhere to park, like if they had a, um, truck or trailer, uh, materials, uh, you know, if they're landscaper or something, they can put a, a pallet of block back there, that type of thing.
Okay. And are you proposing that with gravel then, or?
Yes, that's, we're, we're proposing that as gravel, and then the paving, of course, around the building, yeah. And we're treating it as impervious, so capturing the rainwater and whatnot, um, stormwater, excuse me, but, um, but yes.
And then my second question was, I, I noticed right to the west of the building, you use that term LCE as well, are those parking sponsor?
Again, yeah, these would be parking spots, so if somebody had like a, um, company truck or something like that, that, that we, that's what we envisioned there. Um, but this, this unit kinda gets gypped a little bit because of the, the cell tower, so we're hoping to add a, a little extra room so they have roughly the same square footage as the other units, because as, as you can see, this LCE two oh one is kinda, you know, cut off a little bit because of the cell tower and being able to ship the building and get the graves to work and...
Well, since you're in the middle of that discussion, let's, let's talk about the driveway. Because Sarah's letter says that there's a driveway access off the north line. And you don't have a DOT access on the twelve right now.
Well, it's, yeah.
Does the DOT approve it?
You contacted the DOT to get approval to do that.
We have not, and it's not a new access, it's, but you're right, we have not, no.
So, so if you have an access on the back, that creates a problem with your...
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be, I mean, this, we wouldn't be in this property, of course, yeah.
At that point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we gotta, we have to have DOT, we have to have a DOT letter first, because I thought that was an issue even when Brian got approval or whatever.
So you'll have to get a hold of the DOT and the player.
Sure, sure.
Get access off of it.
Yeah, and I just, Kip had just mentioned to me that that letter, or that email came through, so I saw that, but yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good normal course of action.
Right.
Because what, what we don't wanna do is build this thing and then tell, then have them tell us that we need a turn lane or something.
Right, yes, well, in, example, when they did the development, just up the road, we ended up having to change the location, Trail Twelve coming up. That had to have all DOT approval before any of that could happen.
Sure, for sure.
So, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm surprised in some ways they're doing that, because they, at one point, they come to the town thirty years ago and didn't want us to allow any additional accesses out on the twelve, period. And that, someplace, that went away, I don't know where and why, but it did, which isn't all bad. Because I don't think, maybe they anticipated twelve was gonna be like Eau Claire, where, you know, everything grew by leaps and bounds down there, and so they figured, why are the limited accesses on there?
Sure.
You know, and I think it didn't quite occur out here like that. So I think that's the only reason that they've all that, the lapse.
And again, need a stormwater maintenance agreement?
Yep, you gotta have a...
So you wanna go through the rest of this letter, Kim, will you do it?
Yeah, let's go through it.
Well, the first part is DOT approval, so if not, then, but then the board has, you know...
Well, if they're, if they're committed, they don't wanna come off of...
North Flax?
It's death.
Right.
So we don't have to worry about it, we're not gonna do it, you know what I mean?
Correct. So yeah, we'll need a letter from the state go on that.
What about the well abandonment?
There, we need well...
No problem, okay, yeah. Fully respective, yeah.
Stormwater, for which you'd be working at one.
Yeah, and same thing with the, um, uh, the manager plan, I mean, Kip, Kip and I even discussed that that's part, you know, part of his process, basically, to the design.
Yep.
Dana. 些建筑 meetings and all that, yeah.
Yeah, no problem. Okay. Yeah, there was not, the, the highway thing was really the only, the only real issue other than...
And the stormwater maintenance agreement, yeah, because Tammy...
He asked for you guys, yeah.
Yeah, Tammy has to sign off on that before we can sign off on it, so...
That's it.
Okay, I still, well, I still have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
It was fine, I, I started with LCE, but that's fine.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board before I ask a couple more? Do you have a sense as to how much office and how much warehouse you're gonna have?
Uh, yes, I can... Here's a... Sorry, that is kinda small, but gives you a rough idea here, so each of those offices are eleven by twelves, and then there's a, like a eight by, well, this is fifteen, I'll get to the back, and then there's some halls for the bathrooms, so... So this is fifteen by thirty, and then the rest is warehouse, you'll have to subtract out an eight by eight bathroom.
Have you read in Brian's building at all, Dan?
Yeah.
Because it, it seems to work, it does, yeah, I agree.
Well, his offices are much smaller than what they have.
Well, the reason I'm asking that...
It could easily be, an office could be added, but, yeah.
But, so someone came in, wanted to buy two units and, and put in half offices, I mean, that's a possibility as well.
It would be.
Okay, and then on the zoning of this, it's warehousing now, but could you do lay assembly in there of different uses?
It's all industrial, so, yes.
You could.
Yeah, yeah, manufacturing and assembly, yeah.
Okay, so then, then I wanna come back to ask you about your parking, because on the other building, it's double loaded parking. But you, it says per code, somewhere I read in there it says per code, but you only have about twenty-some parking spots. I'm just wondering how you guys came up with that number.
There, we, pretty much just here with Brian, and Brian, the only difference between Brian's, he's got a drive out here and parking on this side.
Right.
We have a drive out here and parking on this side.
Parking on that side.
That's really the only difference from what Brian has. And, and talking about the man, I wanna say that, that he was, he put in enough to satisfy whatever code was, and not, not much more.
There's not much in there.
Yeah.
The code in there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that, that's why I wanna make sure, as a board.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because if you do, I mean, we might as well talk about that, if you come back in and somebody wants half the building and, and they're IT company, they wanna put in fifty percent offices, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna start running into problems.
That's good, okay.
So, that's why we talk about parking and paving and those things on the front end. Do you have any sense as to where, from your deciding, as to where you could put more parking if you needed to?
For that, you could probably put probably a lot, locally, all the common areas back here, that's probably the only option.
Yes.
Overhead doors in the back, so you can only park it, I mean, you can maybe put one stall in between each one.
Those are the garage doors back?
There's already doors.
Oh, there, that'd be different. That, that's those garage doors?
If it's like...[1767.82] Well, Brian, the entire, that can be parked.
Yeah, I was going to say, you could put...
That's like where you keep where Brian uses the dumpsters and all that.
We got, we got, do you see it here?
Yeah, that's funny.
So I mean, depending on what kind of vehicles are coming in to use those overhead doors, if it's a bigger vehicle, they need a little more room, if it's just smaller vans, then obviously there's... There's actually room back there.
Did you guys talk about a truck dock?
No, there's no truck docks.
I said a truck dock.
There's no truck docks.
An unloading ramp?
There's no ramp doors.
So your dumpsters now for yours is to build and keep those inside?
Brian and those folks do.
They're all inside, nothing outside, so no enclosures.
And again, that's kind of the, the point of this LCE is, is if somebody needs a dumpster outside, then they can build their own enclosure. Because I don't want, I want to try to figure out what people need, so. Because I think for most people, like inside garbage cans can be fine and they can wheel it out that the day of trash.
Is this different or same association as Brian's?
It'll be the same.
Be the same?
Yeah, it'll be the same.
So I'm just about out of questions. Your mezzanine, are you going to, is that just storage up above the mezzanine?
It would be, yeah.
No offices on there?
Yeah, it would be because from talking with my building designer, he said that you get into the elevators and farting around, and this would just be storage for the warehouse part. And frankly, drop the ceiling in the offices so I don't have to heat, you don't have to heat sixteen feet.
Okay, other questions from the board members?
That LCE area, I don't know how to address that issue. Because it's sometimes, some of those get to be catchall dump areas, pallets and shit like that. And most of the areas we require outside storage to be screened. And that, and it was never the intent that that's how that's going to be used. But it depends on whoever runs that section and how they maintain that area. You know what I mean? That's the only concern.
You can put that as a condition, you know, so that...
I agree with Kip's comments, because you know, if it's a dumpster, it's got to be screened and...
Any outside storage...
It has to be opaque fencing.
To be screened. So it just doesn't turn into a dump hole. You know what I mean?
So these are condo units, right?
Correct, yep.
So this is, even though that, that doesn't ask about the LCE, so that's, that's still a common area of space then, each one of those in the back.
For that unit.
For that unit. For that unit.
Yeah.
I understand, but because it's a condo, you'd still be going to a condo board or whatever and saying, you know, just like most condos, you know, you should go and put up a storage shed over your deck, repaint your deck to other color. So this, this is our chance, this is our chance to address what's...
Association should draw their own rules on that, have rules that basically say that all the...
Right, right, so their, their rules, their rules could take care of some market concerns of going, hey, you can't have a trailer out there with three flat tires and hasn't been moved for six months.
My only concern, I guess, is that Brian's, I mean, you know, that's what they call it, grandfathered in or whatever.
That's why I said it concerns me. How do I tell you you can't?
Yeah.
Yet, it also protects you by saying that needs to be screened so that the other neighbors aren't complaining about the way Marion Shaw keeps all this shit in the back. And my question for you is, why is it a bother? I mean, we're working as an association, it's, there is, nobody, the public doesn't see that area.
Today.
Because it's on the backside of 12, the future of North Flex won't necessarily be in the back anymore. That's why, Marion.
Well, it's not just you, it's everybody, because if you don't have to do it, then everybody in industrial can just do it and then pretty soon the whole, everybody's got to...
Well, you would have standards.
Right.
And if North Flex expands, you will see it.
But it isn't looking like that.
Right, in industrial area, do you need to screen that?
Yes.
Yes, it's in our ordinance for opaque fencing and not outside storage and dumpsters.
Well, that's why the guy at North Flex has to screen it all the time.
It's all in there, yeah. So what, what do we want to do tonight? Are you just primarily to look at this or...
We have to, we have to, we have to get all the...
Right, so we have to deny it until we get it.
Right. So Tim, do you want to make another motion to deny or should be the cleanest way to do it?
Contingent?
No.
Oh, yeah, we wanted to bring up one last thing. We brought it up at the planning commission meeting, but kind of wanted to get it on the books too. I don't know, maybe, maybe we're not even there, but this, the setback issue. We had, we had, well, we sort of have three different interpretations. One in the ordinance, it says a hundred and fifty feet, another place in the ordinance, it says a hundred. And then after the planning commission meeting, they said it was US Highway setback, which is fifty. And we have it at, well, we were basically just matching Brian's, which is one twenty to the oning, I believe. We just want to make sure that that's...
Well, it's fifty feet from the right of way and you have to get, the DOT is going to tell you how far you have to have it back because of Highway 12.
Maybe it'd be fifty feet or a hundred ten from sideline as well. Exactly. So it'd either be fifty feet or seventy or sixty seven feet at worst for trans two.
Yeah, I don't know what it is. I mean, ours used to be eighty-three and a hundred and thirty-three, depending. The rule is fifty feet from the right of way, but when I talked to Tammy, when she called me, she was sending this over quick, she said the DOT is actually going to tell them how far they have to have the setbacks, so that'll have to be in the DOT letter too.
So the clarification is, if the DOT is less than yours, obviously yours...
But then you have to do the...
But then you have discrepancy in your code.
Right, we need to, we need to work that out, then you know when we're going to have to bring that back, that's good.
So the hundred, the hundred feet period, the town code is what will be acceptable, if the DOT is less than that. Because obviously, if this gets pushed back...
Ours is fifty feet from the right of way, whatever the right of way is on Highway 12.
That's not how it reads. It reads fifty feet or if it's, uh...
Where's your...
There's two areas, actually, I have a highway thing there.
Yours, his is up to date. It's sitting on the thing in there.
Are they really? Because I kept thinking, I gotta ask you that, I keep forgetting.
So when you look at section D four, that's where it references a hundred and fifty, but then when you go to section...
Building setbacks are...
You want to go to setback sections under F, that references a hundred feet from residential bodies. The other one is a hundred and fifty.
Right here, setbacks, the minimum building setback from any industrial district from a public street right of way shall be fifty feet from the right of way. Amendment eight seven two thousand eighteen. Interiors fifty feet, rear yard is fifty feet, and A residential, residential body is a hundred feet.
Yep, so that's, that's, so that's an hundred, but now go back to your...
Fifty feet from the right of way, the right of way is fifty feet.
And now go back to your section D number four.
Right. Which, that should have been changed when this was changed, because everything, right.
So that should have been changed to a hundred to match this one.
Correct.
That's what we want, clarification, that fifty foot difference makes a big difference.
Quite absolutely.
Have this work out.
Yeah.
And what are you at right now, you said?
Right, a hundred and twenty, so we meet the hundred, well, we went and meet the hundred and fifty, so I had the idea.
Well, and obviously, they're matching Brian's, so if Brian's went through, that didn't change. So it was like that when Brian did his too, and nobody caught that because it was, you looked at the building setback. I know, Brian brought that up to me too.
They might have to make Brian move his building.
Yeah.
That's not what I'm here for.
You could always move the road.
Could do that too, building is easier. All right, any other discussion? Any other points you had for us?
Well, that was a big one, but is there any way that we can make this a contingent approval?
No.
Upon the DOTs?
No. Well, no, because we have stormwater maintenance and all that, we appreciate it.
Because we've made that mistake in the past and we're not going to make it again.
All right, we got bit.
Yeah.
We did.
You can blame the guy behind you that ruined the apple cart.
Sorry. We were, we've been doing contingents for a long time and then got bit really bad, so we're not doing them anymore. Yeah, sorry.
And it's a housekeeping nightmare to keep following up on, you have to get that entered as it's done, so.
Yeah.
All right, we've got a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight.
Wait, wait, we're not...
We got to do something with it.
I know, I got to, you guys can let me finish my sentences. We got a lot on the agenda tonight. Any other discussions for Kip or Josh? Hearing none, is there a motion to be made on this?
I move, we deny their request until they come back with an agreement in the DOT for driveway access out on the Highway 12 and a stormwater maintenance agreement.
And setback from, setback from the DOT as well?
And setback from the DOT from Highway 12. That's it.
And outside storage needs to be screened?
All in outside storage, we'll be screening that, right?
Is, is, um...
Can we leave that up to fire?
No. If somebody puts screening in... Well, if the buyer isn't going to be storing stuff out there, it's used to be screened.
Right, outside storage needs to be screened, that's all it is.
That's all, all they have storage.
So we don't care if you... So they can, so they can screen us in sections as needed?
Yes.
So if one needs it, they could screen their section to put their dumpster out there or their pallets or...
Yes, leave it up to them, yes, you don't have to put up...
Because they might not even need that.
No.
But this is a time to be looking into your restrictions, covenants, what you're doing for the, for the...
So if they're going to need to store it out there, then they need to build screening.
There was a question?
Just on the procedure here, I think it isn't, isn't it a better action to table instead of denying?
No, 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 it's not, no, it's absolutely not.
Or deny it so that they've got a track record to come back through?
Well, and that changes the timeline.
Time, right.
Yeah.
So these are good questions, but this, this lot will keep coming back on your screening and stuff, so it would be great to go back and look at.
Let's see if there's any motions.
Okay, are you second to that?
Second.
Yeah, anything else?
Okay. Second, motion made, second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion's carried.
So do we got to come back to the planning commission too or just the board?
No.
Just the board?
We think you'll be back thirty first, will you be back then, hopefully?
Well...
DOT, yeah. I'd best be imagining the OT, I guess.
So I can put you on the agenda and then you'll have to get me... We have Tammy sign off on your stormwater maintenance, and I need the copies of the letters from the DOT with your approval or whatever. I just, I'll just put you on because they all have this and they know what they're looking for. But as soon as you can get it to me, get it to me, don't wait until the meeting, please. Well, unless you get it the day of the meeting, then...
If we don't get it, well...
If you don't get it, just call me and let me know and then we'll put you on the...
Well, remember Monday through Wednesday, nine to four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then I'll, then I'll put you on the May one, we should have it by May, you know, but just call me.
Is that on April?
No, May thirty first one, March thirty first is the April meeting because April seventh is the election, so we moved it up. Because March is a longer month than April or whatever, otherwise, there's a, it would just have to get pushed way back because there's another meeting already in April.
I think you guys are doing that frankly, so, yeah.
Okay, well, thanks a lot for the meeting.
So I got you down on there, so just let me know when you get that stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that's just Kip Hannah, two seven nine thirty-two, Chippewa.
Yes. And we're still in the concept stage, we've been changing it, trying to figure things out. And I apologize for changing it this little bit tonight, on what you guys' plans are. I was waiting for Sarah to give me, I think, the same letter that you guys got, the same here.
So then I'm throwing this stuff away.
Oh, I didn't get that letter.
Okay. I don't know if you want to...
I don't have the letter here.
She told me that has something to do with driveways and, you know, the offloading roads.
Yeah, I'm going to give this to you for cause.
And all I'm really changing is the driveway and that's what we're trying to figure out.
This is their land division.
She said that I went out to all the people, all surveyors and everything else. I think I went to the second page, but right, um...
I don't know, just going to make copies of it, I don't know that it really applies because...
Well, she said that the ordinance was changed. So what I'm trying to do here is be able to subdivide lot six into two lots. We're trying to build onto it for, actually for us, and our kid is in Barrow. And we need to have the flag lot on lot five, and then on lot seven, because actually my brother owns, he owns that land. Right now, we come in on the furthest wide driveway, way off of Chippewa path, and we have easement going to lot six. And we want to keep that easement like it is. Well, actually, we're going to abandon that driveway and make two driveways there, if that makes sense, from the original. And then we'll have that second one, which will run to lot six and five.
So you're going to have a driveway going to...
To seven.
To Andrew's house and...
Yes, right now, there's...
And then it's... And another driveway essentially next to it.
We already have it actually.
Yeah, we don't have that yet.
Today, it's all one large driveway, are you going to separate them?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Today, you got one large driveway.
No, we have two, we have one going to my brother Steve and Andrew, and then we have another one. Lot six is already here.
I know, I know.
This is a large entrance. This is a large entrance.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, four entrances now, so we're going to make that two.
My concern is that you're going to make it two, not just leave it like it is and put three driveways off. But that's my concern.
We will, absolutely, because there's a telephone pole in the way. So we're going to be on the opposite side of the telephone pole.
Okay.
So there will be grass between them.
Okay, all right, that's my only concern, so that we meet the ordinance requirements, that's all.
Yeah, and we, it's not an option, so if there's a telephone pole there, we have to do that, so.
So can I just restate this for people in the audience and myself? So your brother would come off from the end of Chippewa path, which is a public street?
Yes.
Okay, and then what, what is this shown here? Is this, this white, is this a sixty-six foot easement that you have?
Yes.
But it's not Chippewa path.
No, no, that was one of the revisions that the contractor made and this is what we were supposed to come up with, the original one to make it, not contractor, I'm saying.
So it's similar to what Jim Rush talked about in the information, the sixty-six foot easement is all it is. Doesn't go to anywhere yet, it's not a, not a public road, it's just a sixty-six foot easement.
Right.
For future town road.
So that's sixty-six foot easement then, because that would, I know it's not quite shown up here, but that punches or comes off of that public cul-de-sac then as well?
Correct.
Okay, and then, and then you go down that sixty-six foot easement, which could be made into a future road if it needed to be.
Yes.
But there's no other lots that can be developed now.
This one can.
Other than these two, other than these two, there's no other lots that can be developed.
Right.
Off of the sixty-six foot easement.
Right.
And that's why, that's how you guys are framing this up, and that's how you're proposing it to us tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
You say that if they put, if they put in, if they put in these driveways, there's no, no need for ever a proposed road?
Yes, there is, there's lots.
Because you could divide lot five and you...
And you can divide lot seven three times, four, three.
I suppose, well, actually, we can't because of the, the way it is, the buildable flat area. Yeah, there's...
They're being that there.
Yeah. On one of the pictures, yeah, you can see it on this one here, let me see, you should have that. This is the flat area that I have here.
So even though the lots, my question, I'm not for this or against it, I'm just trying to understand. So even though on paper, it looks like this lot, five could be subdivided, or lot six, whatever we're calling it, your son's lot could be subdivided again.
On your...
On paper, you're saying there's only one point eight acre of buildable land?
Yes, and I am saying on lot six, um...
You guys see that this is from prior?
Well, that's prior, so those numbers are all different than...
No, well, the lot lines, all right, the driveway is the only thing that's messed up. On lot six, it's not, it's basically in half. From here, you know, it's the, this part here, none of this is buildable, this is all already here.
That'll be my other question, so what looks like it's buildable here...
Not there.
Then you're, you're just going down a steep hill, right?
Exactly, yep, and you can see the top on there a little bit. Same thing with lot seven, which is my brother's, his buildable area is really...
Very still there.
Yeah, right, but you can't subdivide it because there's the old flat area here. In fact, we use it for four wheel trucks, so, that hunting, so. So on paper, yes, it does appear that we may need a road, but the reality is, there's no angle.
So easement is the way to get around that, makes sense to me.
And that's what the planning commission has suggested, so that's what I'm here for today.
If there was any chance that those lots could be subdivided, I would have a big problem with that flag lot.
Yep.
The way you're proposing it. The way you're proposing it, I mean, because that really is not, you know.
Yep.
You know they'll, I'll be going through it.
Right.
I mean, there's no way we would approve that, that you'd come off of a sixty-six foot easement and then a flag lot all the way back in there.
Right, yeah, this is what the, uh.
But you're meeting, you're meeting the standards of, by saying, you're coming out from a public street with a sixty-six foot easement, just as we talked about with Jim Rush, right, then off of that, you can do two holes. You're already waterable.
Yep.
And then that flag lot, what they call a flag lot, that long driveway.
That's what we're trying to do.
That shed, let's agree, setbacks from the shed from the driveway, is there any on side lots?
Uh, according to Sarah, there, she says there's no actual setbacks.
Three feet.
I'm sorry, there's, there's a setback of three feet, but there's, your driveway can be, as, that was the, uh, the, we thought it was thirty-three feet, she says there is no actual traffic way.
Required for the driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and we have thirty-six feet or thirty-five foot in two quarters.
Okay.
This becomes an issue though with. Easements again, you know, touching the public road and all that.
Well, as long as it's just two driveways off of that, sixty-six foot easement, it isn't gonna go anywhere in the future, I have less problems with this.
Requires the racial management to start at the point where the lot of lots of public road.
And I, these are just factual questions, so between, between the shed and your property line, is that like thirty-five feet is that one?
Yes.
Okay, so you're putting a thirty-three foot easement then?
Well, no, that's not an easement, well, because that, that would be the, um, property of my life.
Yeah, he's not even.
So it's not an easement behind that shed.
Oh, okay, that's where you're locked up.
That's the lot, that true is.
That's, that's really is a flag.
Right, but it only goes halfway, it's not going all the way on the easement.
Yeah, unless you make that all an easement there.
Yeah, we're gonna do, the, the planning commission said that this was the better way to.
Yeah, it's better, I think it's a better radiation.
Flag lots are discouraged, as they do not meet the layout and design, flag lots longer than a thousand feet shall not be allowed. Shared driveway access on flag lots do not meet the lot design standards.
So that's not more than a thousand feet, no, this is seven hundred seventy, seven hundred twenty-two feet, okay.
Well. Ours is sixty-six feet in our ordinance. The easement stuff, so you have to decide if that easement stopping there is good or if it's not.
Why frankly, the way I would like to deal with it is if we're gonna allow a thirty-three foot easement there, then the lot five can never be future divided.
Well, not at all.
If, well, any of the other lots can never be divided if we allow this.
Well, can we put that in our.
Yeah, yes, yes, that's, that's how I would.
And that solves the problem.
Yes.
Well, I mean, he needs to make a note on the CSM that none of lots five, six, and seven cannot be subdivided.
In the future. If we allow this.
Does that, does that work?
Um.
Well, he's saying, my.
Uh, I, I believe it will, the only thing is lot seven, uh, I have, I can get the easement here, no problem, um, I don't know if he'll have a problem with that, because I actually don't own that.
Alright, you, you need to talk to.
Yeah, and if that's what it is, I will talk to him on that. Yeah, okay, is that the only issue we have then?
I think it is, for me it is, I don't know if everybody else is.
Well, it's fine.
Let's see what the county says and see if there has to be any.
The county was good with this.
Well, we don't have any letters.
Yeah, no, but again, this is all, we're just the concept, um, so I guess, uh, can I hit put back on the board for March thirty first and then we'll actually.
We should start the March thirty first meeting at five thirty. What I'm just saying.
Yeah, we won't even have.
I, I think we should do that.
We have a full meeting.
I'm not, I'm not in a.
People coming back.
I'm thinking we should literally start.
Maybe.
I'm gonna be busy and I'll get out and, so.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I won't.
Okay, so you give me copies of everything and you.
And I will get a co, or get copies of the topical that will show that you really can't build.
And obviously Sarah has this?
Yes.
Okay, so I should be giving them a letter from her then too?
Uh, yeah, I've been waiting actually for that, um, she said, she was gonna send it out to the board.
Well, this.
Planning commission, well, you're talking about this one here, right?
Well, no, not that, I'm just saying I should be giving a letter, if you gave this to her for review.
No, that I did not give to her, this final copy I dropped with its changes on it.
Oh, so we need to get that to her.
She helped me draw, she helped me do it, or figure out.
Oh, sorry, well, just.
So she knows.
Get it to her ASAP though, since our meeting is the thirty first, so that we can get the comments from her then too.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And, um, so then you'll bring me actually a real CSM, and this one's pretty close, but.
It should be, this is what the survey has been giving you, we just, the only change on it was the driveway, so.
So, are we gonna do, you make a motion?
No, it's, he said it was a concept, because he just needed to have everything.
Yeah, I, I just wanna know if this is gonna fly as far as you guys know.
I just, I just pile a comment for the board, yes, it's just a general comment.
Sure.
If this, if these weren't buildable, I just have a real problem with that flag lot the way that is.
And I, I.
I mean, I'm saying for the board, and, and otherwise, for every other applicant, we'd say, no, you need sixty-six feet.
Yep.
And you may only build whatever inside of it, but this, this is a unique piece of property and.
I agree.
That's why we're talking about it.
When we went out to look at it, we said, no, we don't want it, because all it was, was a big repeat, and then we came back down there and opened up, and that's where we built that house and we have the moment. That chunk there is, I mean, literally, that's at the top, I mean.
Right.
You could have Noah's art plugs and we.
And you know your property way better than we do, so you know you've got a buildable enough land.
Yes, definitely, we have, I'll check it out, enough that shaded area.
I'll have to call Sarah and ask her, you said she helped you draw it.
Well, she helped me go through what we were gonna do.
So.
So, my last comment tonight, just in general, it's, you know, I know it's a family member, but if it's, if it was sold to another person.
At a different time.
Then we're right back to.
That's why we'll need to be in motion.
That's the only problem I have before, but I feel like, but I feel like if we're, if you're gonna separate driveways like that, it takes that problem away, because that was a problem I had first time around.
Unless you're gonna let somebody build on a, uh, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five foot drop, there's no way anybody can build on it.
No, I know, I see it back there, the, some, can't do anything.
Yep, it's, it's fun with four-wheel trucks and up to that.
Okay, so, alright, I got you on the March thirty first, so.
But it just doesn't go anywhere.
So you can do nowhere there.
Right, my question is, is you're talking about not being able to subdivide lot seven, but with the sixty-six foot easement there. Sixty-six foot easement stops and seven becomes a flag lot, with that thirty-three foot easement.
The only possible deal that he could ever, you know, with, with lot seven, would we split it down like this and he would have to move, or the property would be right next to there, and possibly, as far as the land goes, he could build over here, but it's so small that, you know, um, the only thing is I.
But the problem that you got now is all of a sudden, you guys got four driveways coming off of that easement, now it needs to become a town road.
Sure.
You know, that's, that's why this discussion is occurring.
Yep.
You're getting, you're getting a lot of leeway here with getting three driveways back there.
Approval from the brother.
Yeah, and you will get, we get, and that's, but I was gonna make sure of them as far as the.
Yeah, that's why I said, so he understand that what the issue is, not now, it's the future, if, all of a sudden, where, where are you gonna put a cul-de-sac there to create that fourth driveway?
Right.
You know what I mean? Because you can't get.
Um.
So can, just get Steve's approval and writing, have him write something of approval too.
Would it make a difference if I bought this lot, or this, this easement part off of that driveway?
Well, if you ask him.
That's an option on the table that I could.
Well, he might, yeah.
But the problem that I was concerned with is it kinda creates two flag lots.
Yeah, I don't think I would want to see that, and I don't, I think, I think.
Well, he, I'm just saying, he, he might make him pay to give up for this easement.
And that's why.
Not necessarily sell it to him, but yet still make him pay something because he's losing that, it's, it's no longer his.
Well, he's not really losing it because there's already a driveway there, it's already gone in the reality of it, but, um, but if I am going to give him something for that easement, and because of that, if I'm gonna give him something, would it make sense for me to own it instead of having the easement?
No, it actually creates more.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's what the city, uh, the county said.
Sounds like, yeah, creates more of an issue.
Well, then you got two flag lots, that's.
That's why I wanted the easement way as far as I understood.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I think if Steve has something in writing for us too, I think that's important.
I will have that for the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Discussion actually creating requests for proposals for engineering firm for the town. So let me just, let me just preface it for those people in the audience and the town board, um. We've been, we've been interacting with the county for a long time, our roads are done through the highway department, um, we talked about Sarah Morell tonight and Tammy Traxer, that all comes through the, maybe development office through the, uh, uh, Sacre County Department. They review stormwater management and, uh, urgent control fences and flag lots. With updating our ordinances, which we did before, we updated our plans because we have to have our own, um, highway codes, we can't just refer back to the county highway standards, we have to have our own, which we did. And we're looking at a joint development agreement whereby we can hire the county to do our engineering work and check on the pavement depth and all those things, so I'm using, I'm using the highway as a model I believe to work. Then the question became is, how long will the county do this for us, because our surrounding towns have their own engineers, so they have an engineer that looks at wetlands, they have an engineer that looks at setbacks, and it's very helpful to other municipalities because what we're doing tonight, all these letters come in at the last minute and we're poring over this stuff, really, which would be doing in a staff meeting, we're doing it in a public setting tonight. The, the ability to have a margin of error to make a mistake is increased, um, it puts additional burden on us, and we're always doing the fire drill of, of asking favors of the county, and I'm saying that positively because they respond and they're here to help us and they get the letters. What, what those discussions have led to then is perhaps it's time for us to look at having our own engineering firm that goes and looks at this in a quiet setting, uh, where they do that on a regular basis, and they know our ordinances, and they, they look at this every day, and they say, oh, there's a flag lot, or, oh, here's a problem with a wetland, and they, and they bring it to us in a, in a summary form that says, deny this, change this, or approve this, this looks good to go. That's in a nutshell what we see from other municipalities. What came out of these discussions then is that we would like to go up for requests for proposals to see engineering firms that are out there that work primarily with municipalities, and that's something we're gonna discuss tonight, so that we know what, what is out there, what the costs are, what their level of services are, uh, because simply put, the majority of those costs are passed back to the developer or the applicant, as we do now with the city, or excuse me, the county bills, when they bill us back for their services. So with that little background, what's, what's in front of us tonight as a board, we ask our attorney to put together some request for proposal documents, and I think what we need to do as a board is look through any comments that we have, any changes or suggestions that we wanna see, and then come up with a list of companies that we want to send it up to.
Paul sent me the list for all the contacts, but, though, this one is from Paul, and this one is actually, um, one I copied from an engineering firm, so this one obviously has a lot more information on it, I mean, this is one that.
Can you reference those again, can you start from a specific.
Well, this plain, simple one is from the attorney.
Attorney.
This more detailed one was actually ones that have gone out for other municipalities, um.
Just two different.
Yeah.
So, um.
As far as the, uh, exhibits, you know, which, the consulting agreements and attachments and so forth, is that template, is that borrowed from somebody, or is that, is that.
Right, that's the one I said that I just stole it from, a template from another, you know, view, this one, I don't know where the attorney got it from, he just, you know.
I see what you're talking, okay, so, so the second piece there, the exhibits actually go with it?
Well, the exhibits go with this one.
Yeah.
So this is all one, this other one that's just simple was one that the attorney wrote up.
Okay.
Is there a reason why he wrote it so simplistic?
I have no idea.
My, my guess is the public gives the consulting firms a chance to respond in their format, say, this is what we're capable of, this is what we excel at, but, uh.
Right, but this one actually says that we need people that can do this.
Right.
So then it becomes an issue because if you send this plain one out, then how do we?
We have, we gotta know what we need.
And we don't even know what we need.
I've always been a firm believer that, that there's no reason to remake the, you know, wheel, so I, well, I appreciate the attorney's work, I'd rather just stick with what we know is working. And not try and make it our, I mean, we're not, this isn't, this isn't a new concept, we're just getting to it later, so.
Right, so really, all it is, is you send this out, I mean, this is the notice that'll go in or whatever, it's just this little short sweep, and I just send this to, he gave me a bunch of firms, um, and then I will send this and.
Are we gonna publish it anywhere too?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna have to put it in the paper, I'm gonna put this in the paper, but this will go on the website.
When, when the city would talk about RFPs for different things, is there a professional publication that, that RFP could go into, that engineering firms might read it, that's my question.
Do you need a, well, the towns, the book, the town association book maybe, but.
I doubt it.
I doubt it.
I doubt it.
The city used to be able to put, we used to put advertisements in, in that book, in our city, in the city one, the one that went around, but I think it's, everyone, when they answered, they answered off the website, off.
Okay.
Off the paper, or now we could probably even put it on like Indeed and see what happened, I mean, it's changed, but I wouldn't do that.
No, I'm not doing that.
But I mean, I'm saying as well.
I was just asking, I.
No, no.
Question, that's all.
They need three locations, right?
Well, I'll just publish it and then I'll hang it up and put it on the website, or, you know, I mean, it'll get posted in our three spots, but I'll publish it in the paper that no one reads.
Send it out.
And then I send it out to a handful that I got from the attorney.
Okay.
Um, you know, there's.
Are we sent, let me ask one other simple question, that is, does that list include all of the engineering firms that surrounding municipalities are using?
Well, he gave me Cedar Corp, which Troy and North Hudson uses.
Okay.
I don't know who St. Joe uses.
I don't, I forget.
The city, I think, uses Cedar Corp, the city uses like six of them.
Oh, do you really?
Well, it was two at one point, I don't know.
I don't know, they have people all over.
We have it for stormwater, and that's for roads.
We have it for. For the dam, they have it for.
But when they pay them, as we use them.
Right, and that's, well, that's what our thing is too.
Right, so I'm saying the states aren't, they're not communicating, it's back to us, they're not spending a tax.
SEH?
No, that's Stevens.
I don't know if Stevens is on there, is it, are they not there?
Yeah, that's SEH, I think, that's, isn't that Stevens, SEH?
Walking, they gave.
No, I think SEH is short, short, Elliott Anderson.
Oh, okay.
Stevens, they did change their name though, you're right, Stevens did change their. Stevens did change her name. I don't know what she, so.
And I'm okay with that list, but I'd also want to make sure that we're sending it to all the.
Heirs and associates.
Heirs, okay.
And those are the only three.
So the only.
The only thing is, you gotta be careful.
St. Joe uses.
Well, you can call Theresa and ask or whatever, the only thing is there are other, um, engineering, you just need to make sure that they're not people that do this.
For people in the local.
Because otherwise they're gonna have to hire a different engineering firm, which we don't have an agreement. So then we have to start hiring multiple ones to avoid any conflict, which the attorney said does happen. So the bigger ones, obviously you're not gonna have that problem with heirs, uh, Cedar Corp, whatever, just because they don't do that kind of work. They do municipal work or whatever.
Okay.
Um, I don't know enough about S E H, I'm assuming, but, um, if you start using, I mean, I think we've had S E H come in though with plaits, so that's something to take, you know what I mean?
Yep.
But, I don't know, those are the ones that the attorney sent to me or whatever. So obviously he was picking the big ones and not the little ones.
Yes.
Because of the conflict of interest.
Okay. Decision. What do we make the decision on when we receive the fact? Cost of services?
Oh, I, right, the services. I would think all the, well, the scope, what, what they do.
But what can they do? Cause we need somebody that can do what they charge. Everything.
You know, if, if, if they have the best scope of services and it's $300,000 review, then that might not work. I'm making extreme examples.
Just so we understand.
And the cheapest isn't always the best though.
No, and I don't get that. So just so we all understand, when we agree that this is the direction we're moving, as I stopped, stopped listening to Theresa talk about, they charge for concept. To bring a concept to the board, they charge, somebody to bring it in, for a preliminary plaque, they charge.
Correct.
For a final plaque, they charge. So we're gonna be doing that with everything, so tonight, those people that came in, what, what had probably happened is they'll start to learn.
Everybody charges except us.
They, they don't come unless they're ready.
Correct.
There you go. We just saved ourselves about the last 45 minutes.
Yeah. So I, just so we understand that that's what's gonna happen.
And we're charging them, they're not charging us.
Correct. And so they don't come in when they're not prepared.
Right, it's kind of like, you know, free help.
And we're the only ones that don't turn to, everybody else does.
Doing it, just so we understand that, and I agree. And I, I kind of resisted because Jeff never wanted to do it and I think I agreed with him because we had engineering firms that were responsible. I think the Girl Scout camp taught me that. When they started buying, bringing in Minnesota firms that didn't have a clue about the county or the town zoning and didn't care. It was like, whoa, and now we don't have the expertise to make sure that they've got everything they need. That's when I felt like we got put away. And I went, no, that's not right. And, and most of the easy picking of the fruit, and the town Hudson's been picked, so everything that we're trying to do is tough.
And that's why this is a dual discussion, which I think we're on the front end of. Cause we need to make sure we have an engineering firm that's not that Minnesota firm.
Right, yes.
That knows, knows us, knows what we're doing. I, I, I would say conflicted, I'm, I'm concerned because we're still a rural town and we still have individual people that don't, you know, many of the people we saw tonight weren't developers. I mean, they weren't, they didn't have, you know, 50 lots to sell when they were.
Right.
So cost is gonna be an issue that I, that I would want to address. I, I also want to keep our dialogue open with respect to the roads with the county. And, and this is fine, I think we need to have all of this because if, if someday we say, no, we'll take that over.
Or the county tells us, no.
We can't do it, yeah.
That's what I'm scared of too.
I am too. But in the meantime, we really have a unique, I worked with these long enough now, we really have a unique situation with the county highway department where they're doing everything. I mean, you name it, they do it. And they do the engineering and they do the work which we're about to talk about.
And I still think we want to do that with the county.
I do.
When Theresa told me to hire an engineering firm and he, he follows the, the blacktop machine down the road, they're paying engineer to do that to make sure that the stuff coming out of the truck is the right mix of blacktop. And I'm going, you've gotta be kidding me.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
That's ridiculous.
The rural has that we might not have the county for, helping us for much longer, so we need to get our butts in the ground.
Yes.
Our ducks in a row.
So I haven't heard that in respect of the highway.
I agree.
But we had, we had a few, we knew what we did before, we've got to get our own standards in place. The last thing I'd say on that is, is St. Joe and, and Troy, they have their own road graders and their own whatever and we don't.
Yeah.
So, so we need to be very careful on that. So, so I just have a simple process question. This has been reviewed and approved by attorney. This, this one has or has not?
Has been by some attorney.
Well, well, I, I understand, but I mean if we.
I just think this one's better. I, I think cause it, I think it spells out what we need and I think everyone I've talked to said, just make sure. You know, this one might do, I don't know, I.
Well, if you think the proposals are gonna come back with a full scope of services regardless, I mean, they'll, they'll see what they think.
Not necessarily though, that's the thing.
Well, they need to come back with services and price points. And to be quite honest, we did this at the city, we interviewed them on a separate day, it took like a whole day. And we sat and interviewed them.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so.
This was, this, we're at the front end.
This is gonna be a.
Long process.
Well, that's why I think the more information, the better, you know, I think, otherwise you're trying.
We're trying to figure out what we need, we don't know what.
And then if this one doesn't do it, then you can't tell them.
You didn't.
That's the problem, so we.
Bullshitting us, because all of them.
So are we ready to go for, for motion?
Yes.
Okay, and then.
Yeah, I guess I have a question. So what, what are we saying? Are we saying that essentially we would, um, forget the, uh, the attorney's input and just go with this template?
Well, we can have the attorney look at this.
Yes.
And then it'll only take a week or so and then I can still get it, you guys can still just approve it as long as he signs, approves it and then I can get it?
Well, a huge part of it is just really the, uh, the attached two exhibits of this, of the second one. And so we could ta- take those two exhibits and attach it to ours. Because it really, all it is, is this kind of a, you know, suggested, we, we wouldn't even have to say we commit to it. We would say exhibit A is, is an example agreement and, uh, you know, they can modify it if necessary. And then the, the other part, uh, E is just the insurance stuff, so.
And I'm only thinking of this document, exhibit, one of the exhibit As is a master agreement for professional services. So I mean, clearly I want the attorney to look at that, that's only a one-page document.
Yeah.
So, and that's gonna get, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
So maybe we can, maybe we can narrow this down and we get, we get down to the number, we get, we get down to the, uh, companies that we want to solicit a RFP from. We get down to which one of these lot that we want with a final review from the attorney and I don't know what else we can do.
You want to talk about the date, time?
Well, the scope of services is not the same on these, so that's why I'm saying, I mean.
I don't have a problem using, I don't have a problem using this one, that's the non-attorney one. I would just like it to look at.
Oh, absolutely, I agree that, but I didn't want to have them do that until, the whole reason I went and found one is because I had asked for this a long time ago and I didn't have it and I was starting to get a little nervous. So I took it upon myself to go.
So the attorney, if anybody to do this is gonna want to know the date, date, time. When do we want the?
Well, I'm hop, well, I'm hoping that the attorney will, uh.
Not, not March 31st.
Right.
No, I, no, but I want. I want the attorney back to answer me on this, so at March 31st meeting, we can decide this, this, and this.
Yesterday.
Okay. All right, okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so I can send this to the attorney and tell him this is on the March 31st agenda?
Yes.
And then we'll make the decision then.
Which one, which one do you use to send to?
What's going out, who's going to it, what's it?
I don't know what's gonna be, that should be like a 10-second agenda item, whatever he recommends, we use.
I agree now.
Well, right, no, all you need to pick out is do by and proposal, questions do by and then proposals do by.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so that's what you'll have to decide so that we can, okay, all right. So I need a motion to send the RFP to attorney for review.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or if it's carried. Okay, it's 8:30, we've got one, three or four more hours. Discussion action on the 2019 financial statement.
Well, I, I think, uh, my comment on that is that, uh, um, we are signing off on that as an auditor. And, uh, therefore we should either apply auditing procedures or have an outside auditor. But I don't know how, you know, we can come by and say that, you know, we're performing audit.
I, I, I missed the last meeting, so maybe someone can catch me up as to why this is coming up all of a sudden. Cause this is how it's been known for.
I don't know, Rita did it, she said that.
I understand that where there's.
Lyle Bear did it and showed her how to do it, the town has been using this, um, and then Len Waxen showed Lyle Bear how to do it. Um, this is really just a, um, yeah, it just puts a bunch of different reports in one spot to kind of break it down for you guys.
It's not.
It's not the re, it's.
It's not what you're saying, no. It's just, it's just, but it's just data pulled from different locations.
So this, we have Clifton Larson.
Board of audit, double functioning as a board of audit. Then why didn't say it?
Well, because you're auditing this report, the, we have this, Clifton Larson does the C report, which is required by the state in order to get our aids, so.
Yeah, so I, I don't mind, uh, you know, we, we specifically reference that report and, uh, that we, and that we don't reference a being a board of audit. Because if we are holding ourselves up as having performed an audit, um.
Well, then maybe we ought to have an audit, I don't care.
Pay somebody to audit it.
What money? Why do we need to audit it?
Well, the tech money's concerned about, that's what you want.
Then we'll have to hire them to come in and do the, uh, it's too late to do this and you gotta get someone on board.
Pay somebody new and I don't care. Well, I think that, yeah. We haven't eaten for decades, but if you feel that's necessary, pay it, I don't care.
It's about seven grand?
I'm not paying for an audit for something that we've been doing for 30, 50, 60 years, whatever it's been. You're gonna pay seven grand for an audit?
Chastity Busse has it seven grand?
That's, that's, that's what it is, when the other municipalities have it, um.
So let's discuss where we're at, seven grand.
And they, and we have them, and we have them do the C report for that reason, because then it is like them doing a mini audit and we pay them.
I think it was like five, didn't it?
No, I don't remember how much it was last year, we'd have to look.
The money, the, the report that goes to the state is done by who?
Clifton Larson.
So it's done by a professional?
Correct.
Correct. Then I don't understand how we would do the same thing twice. And I don't understand why we want to pay $7,000 more, that's $12,000 to audit, the $300,000 budget, which I think is ridiculous. But I appreciate your concern and why you're saying it, but if it's being done already by a professional after the fact, then before goes to state professional, you know, profiled up.
Yeah, if the question is auditing it.
Well, I don't know how long, why, why you would want to pay them to do an audit when you could take about 10 minutes of your time and sit down and go through the bank state and with the treasurer and get these exact numbers and say that you looked at it.
Yeah, and that, well, that's, that's the alternative.
I mean, it doesn't take.
If we're essentially addressing it from the standpoint of saying, that specific statement right there, what we do is we verify the items on that particular statement. We don't call ourselves, you know, board of audit, I don't think we should do that anyway. But nevertheless, I, I have no problem with signing off on it, having verified, you know, the, uh.
Well, I answered your questions three weeks ago. You did not call me and you did not call the treasurer when I asked you to call her to check these numbers and so.
Well, you gave me your, you know, you gave me your comments, um, I didn't want to necessarily discuss it further uh, in a email format, but your, your answers were good, you know, so I'm not, I'm not complaining about the answers.
I know, but you guys always just want to bash us during a board meeting, instead of calling, yes.
No, no.
It is, instead of calling the office.
I'm accusatory.
Then, hold on a sec, hold on, hold on, hold on. If, let me, let me just clarify something here. If, if you worked for Clifton Anderson and you had been working for Clifton Anderson for many years and then you became clerk, the issue would be the same. Because this isn't about you, it's about us, it's about what we're, what we're saying. So it's not accusatory.
But you're, you've approved every piece of information on this report all last year without question and now it went on this report. And you're questioning stuff on the treasurer's report that expenses aren't getting paid and things aren't getting, that's where we have issued that.
Okay.
The way it came across is what we, I'm not paying the bills, the expenditures aren't going out.
No, no, I never said that.
But that's how it came across, is what we're saying. And it was done in a public format and then we had to answer this email.
That's what Bridg, Bridg's about, same thing.
Same thing.
Uh, tell me, okay, no, no, the, the issue was, is that we're saying that we are a board of audit. So I'm not, um, I, I made, made no comments in terms of the quality of the work. You know, what's in there or what's not in there, in terms of, of, uh, something not being appropriate. The question I had was, is of course we did have a statement in terms of the year end that was different than what, you know, was in the statement. And that was, um, that was answered by you by pointing out that, you know, the interest had not yet been assigned, you know, to, you know, the one report, okay?
Right, her report was different than my report.
Okay, yeah, right, exactly, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not questioning that. The point is, is that, you know, um, an audit requires a certain discipline. And it's not, it's, it's not a point of, of, of being accusatory or anything like that. It's just a, it's just a responsibility of a board to appropriately, um, you know, handle the, uh, the finances.
So what do you want?
So, so here, the question, well, I do think that we should be looking at the whole situation in terms of whether or not we have an audit, you know, that's, uh.
The whole re, well, the whole reason the town doesn't have an audit is because we have a separate clerk treasurer.
Okay, so.
If you have one, a clerk treasurer, it's mandatory that you have to have an audit. So the whole reason that we have Clifton Larson do our C report, which puts every, we used to do them by hand, by hand ourselves and I put the kibosh to that a long time ago because of that exact reason, because someone's not gonna believe us. So I said to Jeff, we need to send this off, they look at, I have to send them the ledger, I mean, they, they get every single thing that they need.
So you do that every year to Clifton Larson?
And, and, right, if we don't do it.
And how much do they charge us for those services?
I don't know, five grand or.
It's like $2,000-ish, I'd have to.
I don't know, I don't care how much it is or anything, that's.
I'm not sure I understand the scope of that, but you're saying that's not an audit?
It's not an audit.
It's, they're verifying certain numbers.
They verify every expense and every income.
They're to check and balance, right? We get checks and balances, right? So they're checking and balancing each other in here and then Clifton Larson is to check and balance for them, right?
And do they send us a report back?
Well, they send the C report to the state and then we get.
And then, I mean, there's something in writing back from them that says we've, we've reviewed these ledgers and we've reviewed this and.
They sign, no, they sign off and when, cause they, it all has to be done electronically now, so they.
So we don't get a campaign or anything?
They sign the, they sign, they sign the final review.
And send it to the state.
And send it to the state.
So if there's an issue, the state would come to us.
Going to the state, it's not these, it's not whoever our treasurer is, whoever our clerk is at times, it's Clifton Larson's signature that goes to the state.
Right.
So to me, that's as good as a letter saying you reviewed it because they're the ones signing it.
Well, right, and if there was an issue, the state would be pounding down our river. We would be in big trouble.
Well, no, we care about that part, I'm just trying, this is the part of if we need to do a second audit or a first audit from, if you want to define it that way. I guess I look at it also like you have, we have a board of review, we have a board of, you know, a plan commission, we, none of these, none of us are, are probably fully equipped.
we have a board of, you know, a plan commission, none of these, none of us are, are probably fully equipped to have any of these boards. But we do it, and we function with it, which is one reason why we're getting an engineer in the first place is because it's getting beyond our scope. So, if we have a back, a professional backup right now to this, then I feel like we're doing what we need to do for the taxpayers by making sure it's being handled, and they're signing it and bringing it and sending it.
As long as we have a professional backup, that's great, so if he's, if they're performing an audit, that's great, but I, it doesn't sound like it's an audit.
I'm trying to understand everyone's concerns, I'm just trying to pull these discussions together, not be here all night. Board of review, we sit down, we have a formal setting, we paw through all the stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we go through a step this big, and I guarantee you, not everybody is looking through every little number, every step. I guarantee it, because we would be here a lot longer than two hours for a board review.
Let me just finish, let me just finish, let me just finish my sentences, please. I'm not gonna be here all night on this. I, that document that came across on the consent agenda, which Dan is asking about, said that we, as a board, the town board met as a board of audit, and I'm signing it on behalf of the board of audit. So, I guess I have the same concerns that Dan raised. If that's, goes simply on a consent agenda item, like we put in a bill for the ambulance services, I just think it's, I'm, Dan's comments, hey, we're not, what's your problem? Write the check. Or, or can we have that not be, is that a document that says that this, we met as a board of audit? That's what, that's what that document says.
Well, you approved it the last seven years you were on the board, Don, and never questioned it once, that's not true.
I never saw it once, it was on the consent agenda.
We've never had a consent agenda before, the last three years.
We always get this stuff, but it's right here.
Everything on the consent agenda is in there. You sat over here, and, Don, I don't know if you absorbed it, sorry, I don't, and I don't know why. Because I look back on several of the things that we've talked about, and you don't seem to remember a lot of that stuff, and I don't know, I understand...
Everything on the consent agenda is right here.
We haven't done consent agendas either for the last two years.
My point about consent agendas is unable to follow along is that if it's on the consent agenda, it's not pulled, it's not discussed...
You get pulled from the consent agenda, we just did tonight.
Which Dan did.
Great, so you put a poll for the last seven years.
Listen, this isn't my issue, this is Dan's issue, so Dan, Dan pulled it because it said that we met as a board of audit, and he's asking us to...
By assess, what do you wanna do with it?
No, you pulled it because you didn't agree with my assessed value number, is why I'm pulled.
Yeah, I'm just reacting because you said you don't get to see it, but it's on every consent agenda that we have, which is right in front of us, and you wanted to pull it for the last...
It's a, it's a board of audit, and every month, every month we have a board, two, we met as a board of audit?
No, every month we make the bills.
I understand the bills.
But, yeah, what, what...
Every year this has been on there.
It's a whole different thing. We only do an audit once a year, typically.
Right, and then it goes to Clifton Larson, and they make sure it's right, and then they send it to the state. But if we want this to be seven thousand dollars...
We don't, we don't need to do this, if we don't want it, I don't need to do this, because this is a lot of work, and I don't really need it, so...
Well, that's my other question, is that, does that report go into the state then?
No.
No, Clifton Larson's doing it.
Right, Clifton Larson's does. This report is for you guys to have all the information...
In one location.
In one location, because you've approved all this stuff already. All this, every report in here is now on here, right?
All of the previous clerks have said, put it all together so the board sees what they've...
I don't know.
Let me see that.
So, if we're gonna do an audit, seven thousand dollars... Do you know where you get that money from? I'm just wondering where we're gonna pull the money from, because everyone wants...
Roads.
Roads, yeah, it's coming from the roads.
Great, so what, what aren't we gonna do this year?
Roads. We haven't got any money anywhere else but roads.
Wondering what we're not gonna do this year, so we can audit.
Well, we gotta find somebody that's even willing to do an audit at this point this year.
And what are we auditing?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just surprised that, you know, okay, so there's no audit, you know, I think that's what you're saying.
That's correct, there is, that's why you don't have a court treasurer. Whenever, that discussion always came up, Dan, that was in resistance in town, because otherwise, you, required by state statute, you have to do an audit every year, and you gotta pay for it. And so, you end up with crap like Saint Joe had, where they had the clerk writing checks to herself as the treasurer, and they got way down the road before they caught her at it, because they don't have anybody looking at it till you're in.
This is, this is my final comment, actually, and the truest my final comment. I, I asked, when this came out, because it was on the consent agenda, there was a typo in it, and I asked that and brought that forward. I also asked...
There wasn't a typo though.
It looked like a typo to me, and that's why I asked about it.
Well, I wanted to, right.
Okay, but you know what, this is, this is the point I made, so it's in the consent agenda, at least I want an A+ for pulling it and taking the time and looking at it and going, to me, that looks like a typo, it looks like something's not right. I also asked the question, how we went from personal property taxes from this amount to this amount to that amount, and I think that was a fair question. I think that would have been something, as long as we're talking about stormwater maintenance things and everything else we're looking at today, I think this could have deserved three minutes of our time to pull that, talk about it as a board, and say, you know what, the town Hudson did act as a board of audit on this date and found the financial records to be in order, and it's signed by me as the town chairman, Chris is the treasurer, and you as the clerk, I just, I'm, I'm not back to the audit thing, I'm just thinking it deserves five minutes of our time to look at that.
I think we should abolish it.
You what?
I think we should abolish it.
Well, and I don't...
There's no reason for it.
Well, I don't understand why somebody didn't call the office and question this in the office here.
I don't think we need that reporting, for what?
Well, that's why it's important.
It's just something put together for decades.
It's a convenience report is what it is, you guys don't have to look at ten different reports. Basically, that's what it is. It's convenient for you guys to see all the figures in one format, not ten different reports from the assessor and the state and everybody else, that's all it is.
I have a question, if you remove the board of audit thing, what are you saying?
That's, that's what I'm...
No, then there's no, nobody needs to approve it.
Then nobody needs to approve it.
But then all the stuff's in one place.
Well, it's here, and I, I can just look through here, I know what I'm looking for. I mean, I don't need to spend three weeks putting this together.
Well, right, right.
Do we need that, do we need that report?
No, the question is, do you guys need to read it?
That's my question, do we need that report?
I think it's good to see, however, if, if...
But we're not looking at it, do we really need it?
No, well, here's the thing, we through it every week, the expenses, so, so we're already seen it. However, I mean, it's not a bad thing at the end of the year, no, no different than when you are, at least for me, I have my profit and loss statements every month, right? But I still have to consolidate it at the end of the year and really look at everything, to make sure I got it all right, right? We're never gonna make sure they got it all right unless everyone's gonna go back and look at every single bill for the last year. Which if you guys wanna do that, that's great, however, I'm trusting that we already looked at it every month when we get it in our consent agendas. If we want them to gather it together still, so that we have it in one spot, great, just take the audit thing off the bottom of it. If we don't, we don't have to say that.
I think it should be brought together, I think it should be brought together for the public, if someone other in the board wants to see it.
Then just erase the audit.
Then it doesn't need to be audited.
Does anybody ever ask for it?
No.
Erase the progress on audit and promissive.
It should be available.
Everything's available.
Everything's available, so I don't need to make this report, because the, the other reports are already available.
But they're only monthly reports.
No, they're not, no, they're, no, they're not, that, that's not true.
Everything we discuss is public right now.
Yep, you're seeing it month by month by month, because we're approving it at every single board meeting.
And the only reason this was on that monthly meeting is so that we see it before it comes to the annual meeting, is that's correct.
Yeah, but we don't need it there.
But we don't need it there either.
Because you guys aren't doing anything with it, so, and the C report won't be done, so...
And it's not done until May.
And it's interesting, Dan, that you bring this up, and I can remember back, I don't remember, probably five years ago, or even longer, it might have even been before you were getting back on the board, Don. Jackie Smith was never balancing the financial records, and it was all due to that interest, that she wasn't accumulating what wasn't coming back in, and so, I was looking at the financial report each month, and it was always different from what the hell she said it was last month, from what we started with this month, and I'm going, what the hell is this?
Yeah, we're all, we're interiors with interest, we can't wait to prepare the report for you guys before I get my bank statement.
And that's why we finally said, well, just tell me what wasn't on the last months with the interest in. And so, that's why that got entered in, so that it would be balanced at the end of the month with the beginning of the month. Otherwise, they never used to. That was a tremendous error.
That's, that's a superficial idea, you know, but I think the, you know, let me just go back, you know, to the meeting, so, because I would ask for it to be pulled from the, from the consent agenda, it hadn't been already, because I already, you know, I looked at it, and I had concerns with the fact that we're representing ourselves as a board of audit. So, that said, I mean, you can just look at, simply at a Wikipedia definition of what an audit is, you know, what kind, what are the elements of an audit, you know, in terms of checking postings and additions and stuff like that? And, and it is not a question, I never, it was never my intent to question what anybody did, but the point is, is that I would think that everybody would want, would want an audit that would essentially say, yes, we're doing everything right, and, and our numbers are good. So, and, you know, what you're pointing out is that the state is saying that for us, you know, because we have two people, we need actually to be exempt from audits. And, but there were people who questioned that I would even ask for a bank statement, to see what the amount is, is it the same as, as what we have in our report?
That wasn't the question, the question was, they will never leave this building under my watch. If you would like to see the bank statements, I will gladly, if you come in the office, I'll give you every single one. That is not public knowledge, I don't want that information out of this building.
That's fine, that's fine, what I did is I, I asked that we be able to see, you know, the bank statements, but there was a lot of defensiveness, including, you know, from other members of the board, and it causes me to have concern in terms of how we see our role in terms of stewards on behalf of the taxpayer, so...
And again, I don't understand why you have never called the office, you've been in, what, ten months, and you've never called the office to question anything?
We got our first annual report, and it's not, it's not audited, and it claims that we've performed the audit, that is, that just came.
I didn't make up the wording, I'm just saying, when we've done it, again, you need to call the office.
We've had this more than three minutes. So, what do we want? Now, I have my initial statement, twenty one...
I'll go first, we should keep the report, we should, we should see this each year. We should not represent ourselves as being auditors of that report. Okay?
Perfect, take it off the sheet and let it move on, yep.
Are you gonna approve the report?
Nope.
Then why do I have to do it when I already have a hundred reports? Why do I need to...
No, yeah, I think, I think it should be put on the consent agenda, yes.
Okay, so then you do need to approve it.
Yes.
But you won't sign it.
Like, we're not gonna...
Yes, you are gonna sign it, so that there's a sign thing, I'll just take it off and...
Listen...
I'll take this off, then you can sign it.
Unless the state statute says you have to sign this with this language, as a board of audit. I don't think it's that complicated, we can have the report, we can approve it. We don't sign off on all these other bills when they come in, but we have the report that we can look at.
You do sign off on it.
When you approve the consent agenda, you do.
Yeah, it's gonna go on the same consent agenda, that's my point.
But you're also signing every single check, that's approving every single expense.
You know, I would say this about every single check, and I don't wanna carry this on tonight. I come out and sign these checks, and the last one was for a hundred and three thousand dollars to the library. And I signed it on President's Day, because we've sent out some big checks, five point six million, whatever they were. I need to have these signed, I signed it, it was President's Day. A week later, on a Tuesday, I get a call, and you had to come out and sign some checks. Well, here's, here's the hundred and three thousand dollars to the library. Well, you said you told me, well, we took it out of savings, we took it out of this account. I, I'm just saying, for the board, I don't want me put in the position that, hey, I signed these checks, so these are all, each one that I signed has been scrutinized. I work on good faith here, too. I think we should do just what we said, you continue to do the reports. We continue to prove them as we do the monthly bills, except that one only comes in once a year. And what we do on the consent agenda, we don't, but we take the audit off of it.
I swear I said that ten freaking minutes ago.
We did, but you know, what, what, what Vicki just said is that we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that.
No, I didn't, I said, we're gonna approve it then, otherwise, there's no need to do the report if you're not gonna approve it.
We're gonna approve it.
Right, approve of the audit words, which is what I said ten minutes ago.
Do you want that in a form of a motion?
One hell of a minute, because everything you're...
I'll put it back, I'll put it back on the agenda, so you can approve the tax file.
But we're all signing some very big checks here, that's, that's...
Those are checks sold down, like the hundred and three thousand dollars to the library, we approve it, we have to pay it, like, we already approved that in our budget.
I know, I'm saying the same thing, I came out and signed a check on, on President's Day, because all the checks had to go out.
Right.
A week later, I, I come on, sign a check and say, oh, we decided that, that didn't go out that day, we pulled it out, we wrote it out of the checking account, excuse me, we wrote it out of the savings account instead of the checking account.
No, I wrote it out of one checking account and decided to take it out of the checking account where the taxes came in.
And voided that check.
Voided the check.
And had me sign a new check.
Correct.
And I'm just saying, for the feedback, whether it's in public or it's not, there was urgency on Monday, they had to be in the mail, and a week later, it came out and signed, signed the check again.
Not much, she just had to do that check because she was doing the other checks, because the other checks did have to go in the mail, because they were due.
Those were the taxes, those were taxes.
Would you rather not sign checks?
No, I'm, I'm moving on, I'm moving on, all right.
Any motion?
No.
Perfect, let's go.
No, discussion and action on twenty, twenty-one row projects.
Oh, wait, I have one more thing about financial, can we go back for one second? It's not about the check thing, but it's about discussion on 2019 financial, I have a question.
What, what is it?
I'm asking if I can ask it, can I ask it, thanks. So, the, my question is, the, all the stuff that was sold off by C or EMS and stuff, what's going on? Did you, did you investigate that?
I did, I did, and they called it, called me back, and they're putting together a list of what, if it's ten cents on the dollar or whatever it is, and they're gonna try and prorate it based on our contributions to that.
Okay, the same with the, the one that the car, like, all the, and the one car went to the fire department, it was just fine, but the car went to the police department.
The ambulance car, the, you know, whatever they had, whatever they had, if it gets sold for two cents on the dollar, they take that two cents and they divide it up between...
But it did get sold.
North Hudson and whatever.
Oh, yeah, the car wasn't sold, it was given.
But, but they, the other part of that was Scott took care of all the sales, what about the cash? Are these saying about the cash?
Okay, well, let's put that on the agenda for another night, because it's...
I, I just wanna know if this, we follow up on it, I asked for decisions.
Yeah, we followed up on it, I sent them a letter under my name, we had Paul send them a letter under the attorney's name. I followed up with them, I just don't remember the person's name, and said, hey, we, we contributed fifty-one percent of that, we want our fifty-one percent back. They said, we're in the process of selling all this stuff at auction and whatever it might be. So, that, that's where we're at, that we're owed an accounting from the city as to where we're at.
And you answered better, the one that I asked was cash. We kept a half a million dollars in cash in reserve for the EMS funds to make payroll, that always had to be there, and as a consequence, what happened? I know we dropped it down to keep the, to keep it at seventeen dollars per cabinet to four hundred thousand dollars of cash. There's four hundred, that's, the peanuts and the shit they're selling is peanuts compared to the cash. I wanna know what's happening with the cash.
Okay, let's put that on the agenda for next, next...
Do we need it on the agenda, or can you just find out?
Let me just find out.
Just find out, I don't wanna...
Why do you need some facts?
Just go find out.
Because it's nine o'clock.
I don't care. I don't care, it's 400,000 dollars because of stuff you just brought up. Like we're, we're talking for almost 45 minutes on the budget.
Probably didn't realize there was that cash laying there.
I didn't know that you just said. But we just talked for 45 minutes on the budget and reconciling things, so I think this is a fair time to ask a question.
Because I apparently didn't make it clear before, I'm sorry.
That's a lot of money.
So that is a lot of money. And that's why I was always wanting to know what was gonna happen to that when we bailed out.
Wow.
And when the city bailed out also was like, okay, do we have our opportunity for that?
Okay, we're moving on. Action on the roads.
Where do you want to start?
I'd like to summarize it for the board and the people in the audience as best I There is a document dated June 12th of 2019 that should be repapped.
Yes.
I call that the master budget for capital improvement projects. We asked the county and their superintendents to rank these roads, so they, they are our consultant and they're engineers to rank it as to which one based on vehicles, usage, and how far it's deteriorated and to rank them. So we borrowed roughly 2.5 million dollars. We did it over four years. We're doing Kenny Road now and we're doing Daly Road now. And we need to start picking projects for next year. And if we keep out those numbers somewhere around $800,000, then, and we don't have to resolve this tonight, but I wanna start getting into the discussion, then we should start picking capital improvement money for projects to do in 2021 and start that process. And it's my understanding that that money would come out of the borrowed capital improvement dollars that are sitting in the bank today.
But we only borrowed 2 million dollars.
So that's great. So keep me honest on what the number was. So it's 2 million and we're gonna have to do Kenny and Daly. Now, now, if you start down this and we did nothing, we just took these at face value, you'd say the number one, one that they ranked was La Barge Road. It's a minor collector, does 1,000 vehicles a day. And if you did the recommended repave, then what they're proposing would be $400,000 to do that. The second one was Gilbert Road and County Road and to the South Town Line. And you can read these, that's between 407 and $550,000. Now, if you, if you go down through these, you've got Kelly is number three, that's from Badlands to Highway 12. And I wanna pause at number four for a minute, that's Badlands from Kenny Road to east, to the Town Line of Warren. And that's the one that we spent all the time on in late October, doing the federal grants with Warren Township and the, and the Town of Hudson through the county. So we, we, this is estimated to be $500,000 for our portion if we did it. And if, I think that was a $3.2 million request on the federal funds. If that were to ever be approved, we would all celebrate and not drink the cake. And that would be a Warren-led project because they have most of the distance of Warren Township. But if we repaving, redoing, upgrading Badlands Road from Kenny to Warren Township and through Warren Township. So those top four are the, what I call capital improvement ones that we could take out of the $2 million, which we're gonna spend about close to $800,000 now, this year on Kenny and Daly. Now, separate and apart from that budget becomes these asphalt overlay projects and the crack sealing. Pardon me?
Not, I'm by my sheet, I mean, I like stuff, no, I can't.
Okay. So the way I'm looking at this, and I'm open for guidance and I'm open for direction, but one bucket is coming out of capital improvement dollars. The other one is coming out of operational dollars that we put in our budget.
No. This sheet is all capital improvement.
Correct. Different dollars. Can't be mixed.
Okay. Asphalt overlay, that's a mill and overlay, that's, that's a construction project. That's not maintenance. Crack filling, seal coating, spray patching, all that, that's the maintenance.
Which leads me to number three on Countryside Lane. That one, they're saying $67,000. Some of these could be chip sealed.
You want me to give my recommendation?
Right here.
In, in one second. Because I was also asked to put together what we need to do for chip sealing, the 10 miles of that.
You want to do that separately?
Yeah, that's separate.
That's separate. So go ahead on this one, please.
Let's start down, I'll have you write down if you want, on B, the barge. Let's do that one in 2022. That's number B. That's $400,000. Number two. Well, maybe you just be waiting until 2022. Listen all the way out, okay? The Gilbert Road, number two, and Countryside Lane, com-
It is, it's Countryside Lane, it's one word, Countryside.
Right off of Gilbert. Do those in 2023. That total would be $617,000.
Hold on a second.
You got Gilbert, Countryside.
So you're, you're in the general vicinity of doing Gilbert and Countryside. Do them both at the same time in the neighborhood.
What's that total?
617,000, only on the high side. And it's not that well traveled, but it, so if you really wanted to do an overlay in there, you could, but if you wanna throw that out, they recommended it because of the condition of it. Otherwise, you could do just what Don's saying and I just go with chip seal. But we're out to 2023 before you're making that decision. 2021, I would do Kelly Road, Tanny Lane and Prairie Lane, which is three of B and one and two of C, and that total is 577,000. And Badlands is just as Don indicated, it's whenever it happens, if it happens. You know what I mean? And we won't be able to know that till the grant money comes through.
Right.
What we're gonna do with it.
Even when the grant money comes through, they're gonna require us that they, that there's.
So did you do a subtotal as to when we ran out of 2 million dollars or have you run those numbers?
No, we don't run out yet.
Okay.
Because 577, 400.
Just over, you know, 1.2 million.
And 617 is.
Yeah, 1.5 million. Then we have.
Well, we got Daly and Kenny though, but he's just saying, this doesn't have to do with them.
What's Daly and Kenny running?
1.5 million.
Oh no, I don't think so.
It's up there.
No, 7, I'm gonna say 797,500.
Too much for that, Dale.
But that's two roads.
That's two roads.
But, I mean, we're gonna have to shift stuff, but.
This is very helpful because this is the methodology that we wanted to start coming up with.
That's where you come up with like 1.5 million.
Oh, 1.5, almost 1.6 million.
1.5 or something.
So yes, we are gonna run over, so you wouldn't be able to do Gilbert.
And that's not the end of the world.
But we would borrow money then.
You'd be borrowing money by then.
Because it's time for us to, we're just going through our four-year cycle.
But you would have money, body of maintenance that you could move your construction anyway.
Why are we waiting on La Barge?
Well, because La Barge is a rating of four to five. Kelly is already a rating of four.
So La Barge is going in the ground.
So it's Kelly.
Yeah, but they, they redid a chunk.
They just had one spot.
They did redo it.
Plus it's way too, it's way more money than you can't do Tanny and Prairie.
Okay.
And they're going down.
And they're going faster than.
Yeah. Yeah, I drive Prairie every day, it's fun.
Well, and you drive Tanny quite often too.
And Berry.
It's fun.
Oh, Bear, Bear Road, the whole, we got, I got three complaints on Bear Road today.
Oh my God.
That's a seal coating and a patch.
It's in there, it's in there.
No, it's in, it's in a different discussion.
I know, but it's, it's being done at one point.
Right, but it's a different discussion because it's not, it's not a remake.
That's fine, as long as something is being done, I was gonna bring it up if I'd see it.
Look at your face when you read it.
Well, just.
I drive Bear Road several times a day. So I, the only good thing about that was sweeping the edge of the road because everybody has to drive on the shoulder and they're pushing the sand.
Why don't you just wake it? Yeah, well, you can probably wake it.
I'm not riding with my bike.
All right, so you make, do you wanna make a motion to do those?
I would make a motion to do that.
Okay, so your, so your motion is?
Do we wanna, do you want all that you just did or do you just want the ones for 2021? Because we have to start 2021 this year.
Yeah.
Because things could change by next year. So do you just want the ones for 2021?
Improve the 2021 ones and recommend the 22 and 23 years of being La Barge in 2022 and Gilbert and Countryside Lane in 2023 as the recommendation for future possibilities.
Are these numbers, I'm just curious, are they leaving us a slush fund in case we have an issue?
No.
Well, right now they are because we still have the money, so next year maybe we can only spend 395.
And that's why 2022 and 2023 are only recommended.
Okay. I just wanna make sure because of the whole La Barge.
And then by 2023 would be in our four-year cycle.
So in year 2023, you might not be able to do it all without borrowing more money.
Right. Which would be till 2023 anyway.
Right.
I'll let you read your motion. Because I'm gonna support it, it's the same one.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so Kelly, your motion is Kelly Road in 2021, Tanny Lane and Prairie Lane, also in 2021. This, these are based on.
Recommend doing those in 2021.
Yeah, and, and the budget's about 500.
Recommend consideration for 2022 in La Barge Road and 2022, the Gilbert Road and Countryside Lane.
Yeah. So right here, a second to that?
Second.
Okay, for discussion. Because, you know, these are 2019 numbers, so if you round that up, we'd be looking at about 600 grand, I mean, just for horseshoes and the ingredients. And that gives us a way to start getting that in the, in the mix or there for. Okay. I know it's late, I know we've covered a ton of stuff. We could discuss this all night and any.
Can, can I make a comment on roads?
Sure. A quick one.
Quick, I'm not an expert on roads, but I'm a substitute bus driver and I drive every road over the year in the whole school district, so I get sort of a feel of what roads are like.
Great.
The worst road is Brumel. It's so bad that it's not patchable. Every couple of years, they dig in a big dump truck full of asphalt.
Oh, great.
And a road raider goes up and down. It's a gravel road, it's so bad that every couple of years, they still plow, doesn't realize he's pounded out and plows out this loose blacktop. I mean.
So where exactly is?
It's on the other end of Kenny.
It's one resident, right?
Kenny when you go continue south.
I think there's only one.
On the other side of it.
Isn't it one end resident on the end? Is there one or two residents that lived on Brumel?
There's one resident.
Can you go across end?
That's why Jeff always.
Go end like you're gonna head to.
Yes, he goes across end and you.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And so you're right, all we've done is ever greater patch. Jeff never wanted to spend more than greater patch on your road.
And the sad thing is it was paved the same day as Kenny, but because Quota didn't have any traffic and never got seal broke, seal coated.
Oh.
So now you end up with a gravel road because you never maintained it and now nobody still wants to fix it. So, you know, five, six years, sometime it's gotta get on you.
Okay.
Is it all gravel now?
No, it's blacktop. It's gravel.
It's will be gravel.
It will be.
It is blacktop, but it's not.
But it's not, because it is, it's just what he described. It's called greater patch.
Yep.
You grade it all back and you throw some black down, down and they, they roll it out and you're right. And if they don't do a good job of maintaining it, and La Barge could come to the same thing if we didn't fix it. And that's his point. That's sort of what happened.
How long has that gone? They just want one resident.
Well, it goes into Troy or wherever, but we have one resident on that road.
Runs through the town of Troy right through the barnyard on the gravel road.
It's a 40, so what's that, 40 mile?
Yeah. It's probably about right, yeah.
Okay, so are we ready to shift to the next? So we thought we capped it out.
Do we approve it?
Yes.
I think we did, didn't we?
I don't, only seconded it.
You seconded?
Yep, yes.
Okay, further discussion? Sorry about that, threw me off. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion's carried.
Now you gotta bring me up to speed on this one.
Okay.
What, what did, what I wanna re-brought to speed on, Don, is I read through this and I read Matt's information. I'm used to looking at Mike Van Kuren.
Right.
And so I'm missing some information on the break. And so when I look at the two different kinds of spreadsheet for seal coating estimates, I don't know if this is doing all the crack filling and, and spray patch prior to the seal coating with that 65 and 48,000 and the 15,000, or if that's just.
This is a, this is a work in progress and we're getting very close.
Okay.
So, so these are great questions. What I asked the county to do, and obviously they wanna stay in, once they start doing it, they wanna stay in.
Stay in the same neighborhood.
Same neighborhood.
Right.
They don't wanna do half a mile here and then run off to the next one. So based on the same takeoffs that Mike Van Kuren did all those years with Jeff Durkey, Matt sat down with his powers of B and they went through the same, same process that, okay, if you're gonna go out there, which one would you do first? So as he is, I can't speak for Matt tonight. My, my sense is we're gonna do some spray patching and doing that, obviously before we go with seal coating.
You have to.
Yeah.
They, just so you know, for years, for whatever reason, the county didn't think that was necessary and they would seal coat before they did cracks and didn't do crack filling and spraying, which was crazy. Was wasting money, was just glossing it over to make it look nice.
So I don't have all the answers tonight on this, other than, other than, I asked the county to put together, basically what we did last year based on about 10 miles of seal coating, you know, chip, seal coating. Go back and look and see what we did for spray patching, I wasn't a part of any of this.
Okay, so let me, let me give my recommendation.
Sure.
All right. I take the front page. There's $128,000 there, that's all the maintenance. That includes the spray patch of 65,000, the crack filling of 48,000, and the 15,000 of doing all of the shoulder, you do all 128.
Yep.
Skip the first page and do that in 2022.
So the $89,000 total?
The $89,000, do that in 2021.
Okay, so which, which...
The one that, the total of 89,000?
Did you not give everybody?
No, I did, I can't, I don't know where I put it.
Put it on the inside of your cover.
I know, and I took it right out.
Well, that'll teach me.
It will teach me, you're right.
So the 89, the $89,000 one is Aldro, Harlar, Larson Drew, or...
All of that. And what I'd like to do this year...
For sure.
For sure, is do all of the second page, the spreadsheet.
The $200,000 one?
But if we're going to do Prairie Lane, there's no reason to spend $32,000 on Prairie Lane.
Save that out.
Take that, do whatever we need to, if we're going to need to spend more on the patching, we'll do the crack filling this year, do that, but don't seal coat it. Take the 32 out, so that brings that to 170,000. If you take the 128,000 of maintenance and 170,000 of seal coating, that leaves us at $298,000, which is around 300,000, and our budget is 485,000. That leaves us some room to say, once we find out what the total spring brought to us, what do we have left, would we got 185,000 to breathe with?
There it is.
So I just, I'm just going to restate, so basically...
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Basically, you're doing everything on this map but for Prairie Lane, up to Doorwood.
No, I'm not doing all of this either.
So which one is that?
That, the 89,000 old.
Aldro, Aldro.
Aldro Lane and all that is not doing it.
Page three. The second stuff, 89,000 dollars.
The 89,000 sheet. It's just, because I don't want to spend all 89,000, and they only leave us under $100,000 of maintenance left.
Yeah.
And because I don't know, because I don't know if this did all of the crack filling and seal coating and spray patch.
But this will be all seal coated and ready.
And so, right, and if, and if he doesn't have all of, and you can remember I'm saying I don't know what he's done? I want Matt to go through and tell me that he's done all of the crack filling and AFZ with the spray patch for all of these in 2021, or '20, so that they're ready to be seal coated. And here's what we used to do prior to years. What we used to do with the county is we'd set it up and make sure that they knew what we were wanting to do at the beginning of the season. We'd get to around August, end of August, first part of September, and they'd say, all right, we finally got all of the seal coating done that you guys needed. How much money, Don, do you have left in your budget? And you'd say, I got 89,000. All right, these are the roads next year that we need to seal coat. I want you, county, to send your crews out, do all the crack filling and spray patch on all of these roads to make sure they're ready to go in the spring of 2021 with seal coating, so that it sat through the winter without having water running into all those cracks.
Yeah.
And that's what we used to do, and so when I look at this, I got confused, and I came over and I said, tell me what I'm looking at. I don't know, because I don't have what Van Kuren and Jeff Durkey used to do.
And I don't know what this is.
And I don't know what it is either.
He don't need any crack filling.
We don't know what he's got crack filled, and so what we need to know is what he's going to do, is make sure that all of these that he was recommending that he does, and crack filled and spray patched with, and then all of that is done in this in 2021.
So let's, let's just try and put this in a moment.
He did, he actually did, I wrote it down. 128,000 in maintenance, spray patching of 65, crack filling of 48,000.
Page one.
And shoulder of 15,000, and seal coating was the other page. A pro, a pro, no, well, not everything.
Minus Prairie.
Minus Prairie.
Minus Prairie.
So we have to have this plus this, minus Prairie.
And take the 2,000, the 89,000 and move it out to 2021. But I also want to know that all of the stuff that's on that 89,000 is going to be crack filled and...
Is it part of this?
Is it part of this, and if it's not, I need to know what that cost is going to be in 2021, to get that done.
If that's, and if it's not on there, then we need to come back to the...
Right, yeah.
And take it out of our 400.
And because what happens is, is if we don't get on that list with the county, we don't get it done.
Right, we don't get anything.
And so they won't, if we aren't on the list to do seal coating, we don't get on that list. So we need to get this. I'm good to go, that's my motion.
You second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion? The all's favor say aye?
Aye.
All is opposed?
Thank you very much.
Motion's carried. Okay. Coming into the home stretch, discussion on Martin Luther King holiday.
I'd like that off.
Okay, well, all right.
We've got the town board meeting right here on the half of the day off.
I think I, I asked for that to go on the agenda, because I think we always are looking at other municipalities, they're, they have that as a paid holiday or as a holiday, and I think that we should consider doing the same thing here.
There's a ton of municipalities, because I happen to work that day too. They were here, and everybody else is close.
Including the county, the county was always the base.
I think they can't really do anything.
Yeah, we can't do anything.
So I think it's like...
So I did notice it, I agree with you.
Yeah, because I was also here, and nothing could get done, so I was like...
I mean, we shouldn't say nothing, I mean, we can do some rings.
But I was, I thought it was just...
We don't get mail, I can't do any banking.
I just like added that to the list of holidays.
Yeah, I got to the bank that morning to make a deposit.
I thought you were going to make the big speech like Rich did.
No, I'm not going to make a big speech.
I did see Rich's speech. I did see the speech, it was very nice.
That's great, Rich.
But I'm willing to put it on the, for future, for future, and say, put it into the contracts for future day off.
So add Martin Luther King as all...
I don't know if I'm ready to do that yet tonight.
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Because I can do that.
Sure.
For why, then I can, but I think that, I mean, we're asking for a holiday, so on a day where everything's off, so, I mean, it's just... I'd like to make a motion to have Martin Luther King Jr. Day as an official day off for...
Holiday for the town.
For the Town of Hudson. As a holiday for Town of Hudson, yes.
Second. Your office will be closed.
I mean, if there's no use, we're having, we have them here, we want it to be productive, so...
I think, I think for discussion, my feelings on that would come through you, the county. I think that's the time to discuss it, as opposed to tonight.
I think it would be that we would have it added in the contract and ready to fill, so we wouldn't have to review a contract at contract time. If we're going to do it, we want it in there before we re-review the contracts. Or reviewing the contract is one thing, but if we could add it in, then...
You're not adding it to this year, because you're already...
Right, we're already at, we're already working.
So it's for next year.
What's your concern? My concern is, I'd like, I'd like to look at the entire contract.
That's a different issue.
Well, I don't know if it's a different issue. I really don't, and I'm not saying I oppose it tonight. I'm just saying it's on the agenda, and we're asking to make a change, but the contracts are already in place.
Right, this year's passed, so we reviewed a contract in June, right?
Yeah.
So...
So you're asking to renew, review it in June?
We do review it in June.
But you're asking to...
You're asking, you're asking, but your motion tonight is that we make Martin Luther King a paid holiday.
I'd like to add it to the contract in June for, to be a paid holiday, yes. And then in June, we're reviewing the contracts. And it would be at that point, if we would disagree with it, that we could remove it versus having to rewrite everything again.
Well, I, my only nuance to that is, my feeling is, that's the perfect time to review it.
Do you not agree that it should be a paid holiday?
I don't agree or disagree, I just don't think tonight's the night to do it. I think we do it in June, and we review the contract.
It doesn't have anything to do with the contract, whether it's like, it's either a holiday or it's not a holiday.
Yeah, is it a paid, do we agree that it's a paid holiday or not, that's what, that's what my motion is. That I would like to make Martin Luther King Jr. A paid holiday for the Town of Hudson.
I would do it in June, I would do it when, we have a contract that says, here's, here's the paid holidays.
Right, the paid, but it's passed, so we don't have to worry about adding it to the current contract. I'm just asking for future contracts, for future contracts, I would like to make Martin Luther King Jr. A paid holiday. For future contracts, I'd like to make Martin Luther King Jr. A paid holiday for the Town of Hudson.
And my response to that is, I would not support that tonight, because we review that in June, and we make any changes to the contract at the end of the year, when their contracts are off.
Okay. Except for our contracts aren't up till 2021. So I changed my motion a little bit, so I don't know if you want to agree with that or not, so that's up to you. I changed it to say for future contracts.
Oh, okay.
So that way it's not affecting the current contracts, then we're ready to do the future contract that's there. That would also be a paid holiday for anyone who is part of the Town of Hudson, including you.
I think there's a time and a place for it, and I think June is when we review it. And we look, we look at the contracts, if we need to amend it at the end of the year, we can do it then.
I appreciate that, but I put, I asked for it to be on tonight's agenda, the county, and I'm trying to make a motion, and I'm at, and there was a second, so I'd like to continue with the motion.
And we're discussing it, right? But that's what I think we're doing.
I'm ready for call to question.
I'm sure it's been done, because it's awkward, so...
Call the question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, no? Motion's carried.
Are you saying yes or no, or are you stating?
I'm opposed, I'm not ready for this one, you know?
There it is.
But I think it makes a whole lot of sense. Thank you for voting.
But we don't review the contracts in June.
So it doesn't matter, you know, we're not off for the fourth this year either, we don't get holidays period.
I just, I think something for the fourth, maybe I should. No, I'm going to leave it at that. I'm going to leave it at that. I know, I know, and I was asked, because the fourth didn't fall on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of this year for you guys to have a different day off, which we agreed to, so...
I think that it makes a whole lot of sense in general to work around the holidays, so the holidays are off. But, you know, the thing is, we don't have a full-time employees.
That's not true, I am full-time, and so is she.
So am I.
So, just because the office isn't open?
That's all right, government, I mean, you have the book.
I know.
I don't have anything for future, if I...
Are we going to make the meeting on March 31st earlier, so we get out of here, because this has been a really long day.
I'm hoping we make the March 31st meeting at 5:30.
And in terms of treating people fairly, I mean, you guys did have a full month of July off, right?
I thought we were done with this, people, it's on modern discussion.
All right. Any further discussions? Motion is adjourned?
Is there a town board member?
Hold it. Yeah, I made a motion, which ends the meeting at 5:30 on the 31st.
There's a second to that?
I'll second you.
If you ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Will we adjourn?
No, actually, there's something for town board members to speak about, to speak about. So I would just like to respect the request that as the town chair, that during this campaign season, that you're not campaigning against board members, and just stay neutral. That would be really helpful.
Well, I appreciate your request.
So I don't think it's appropriate to call people and ask them to put yard signs in for someone just coming on, reading the on court.
That's for a good one, I appreciate her.
I think that's appropriate for anyone who should be on the board.
All right.
Well, that's fine.
I've had enough, anyone else speak on anything?
You need a second.
Dan's second.
No, it's your turn, no, we need to...
I'll second you.
Second.